Recording.
I just now started it.
Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to the November 12th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm going to serve as your Chair of tonight's meeting. Make a couple introductions as we begin. First of all, you just heard from Secretary Janet Parker, who will be introducing all the cases this evening. We have Gunner Hand, who's the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning, along with Byron Toy from the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. We have Michael Farley here with the Unified Government Legal Staff, and we have the following Commissioners present. In the chambers tonight with me, I have Commissioner Duane Beth and Commissioner Aaron Ward. Online, I have Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Joseph Straws, and Commissioner Mary Beth Schwartz. Did I miss anybody? Okay, with that, I will... Go ahead, Janet.
No, I was just gonna say no.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Secretary Parker. She'll read the opening statement on how we're gonna run tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating by telephone, Zoom, or in the Commission Chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the Commission Chamber, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Board members that are participating by Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please state your name before speaking once the Chairman recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the Raise Your Hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@ycoKCK.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decor is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of anyone who is in support or opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer the questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation, and the board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff conditions unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, we have two applications on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda tonight. The first one is BOZA 2024-028, Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting for property at 4116 Booth Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was looking around for you online. I'm not used to seeing you in person.
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please. Give us your address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson, and I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, Basor, Kansas 66007. And tonight, we are requesting three variances at the address 4116 Booth Street here in KCK. The three variances are for a side yard setback, a front yard setback, and the allowed paved area in the front yard. I would like to invite Cindy de Vilbys, the owner. She would like to give a brief overview of the project.
Okay.
Thank you, and I want to thank the board tonight. Appreciate your time. Cindy de Vilbys, 4116 Booth Street, Kansas City, Kansas 66103. So, the project actually started in 2023 at 4116 Booth when I got a building permit and rehabbed the 100-year-old porch in terms of the foundation, the porch floor, and I kept the existing columns that are 100 years old. So, I tried to keep a lot of the character of that. Later, I replaced some of the handmade parts of that. But then, this May in 2024, I decided to go ahead with the renovations in the front of the house because there was much, much-needed renovations still to do. My partner and I, both in our 70s, planned to move into the house, and we have done that. The renovations involved removing about 100 linear feet of old cracked crumbling block retaining walls. About half the walls were replaced with poured concrete walls. We planned to park our two cars since there is no parking on our side of the street. We need easy access from the front porch to the north side of the house, to the water source in the backyard. We need convenient access from the porch to the driveway. So, I knew that those were the needs that we had. And that's the way I think. I was a commercial interior designer for years in the 80s and 90s. So, I kind of think like a designer, though I had never really had a building permit till 2023 on my own for the front porch. It was not possible to widen the nine-foot driveway on the south side of the house to the incline, so parking became more central in the solution. We planned for a walkway to the street that was about four feet wide, like a sidewalk, and two 10-and-a-half-foot wide parking spaces. The driveway and the walkway hard surface percentage was figured during a plot plan meeting with the planning department to be 41%. And of course, the limit is 40%. My contractor in May 2024 referred me to a concrete specialist contractor who typically did commercial jobs. I was told he would get the building permit. The work started in a couple of weeks and was done in a week, except for finishing the stairs. By June, I received a stop-work order because no permit had been applied for or awarded to the contractor or to me. And, you know, I mean, I was a little naive in that whole process. My friends would not... That would not have happened to them. I put together an application and went to the Neighborhood Resource Center and spoke to a building inspector who guided me to the next steps. My only recourse was to withhold some payment from the contractors, which I have done. I've had the project and work materials, the materials, the concrete and the stairs inspected by a structural engineer, and they were approved by that person. The stairways are built with double handrails and provide safety for where we need to go, this north stair up to the backyard and the water source, and the south stair to the cars and moving trash cans to the street. It is my understanding that our neighbor on the north side approved of the position of the north stair, but he's concerned that it changed the traffic pattern brought on by the removal of about 30 feet of retaining walls that always stood in the exact location of that stair now. And so, the whole situation for him was different. So, I mean, it makes sense to me that he's worried about traffic coming around that stairs since it's a different situation. It leaves his property too open to traffic coming down the north side of the house onto his property. This can be alleviated by adding a privacy fence from the north stair to the backyard gate, stopping any traffic into his yard. And that's really our solution to that, and I think that would be very effective for what he needs. In closing, I'd like to assure the board that I was not trained to avoid building inspectors, permits, or codes. My father said always to follow the directions of building inspectors, who he respected. He was an architecture professor at KSU and later the state architect. So, I'm learning a lot about what all the planners do and what the zoning people do, and I really was not aware of a lot of it. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. You want to... Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Austin Thompson, Atlas Land, is holding 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, Basor, Kansas 66007. I just want to get it on record that we would like to ask staff that if we could just modify stipulation number one, which would be instead of removing the north stair, as Ms. Cindy had stated, that we would like to do an alternate route and put a privacy fence that does not allow any access to the north. It's only exit going into the side yard. That is our request to manipulate stipulation number one.
But would that staircase still come down on the neighbor's property?
No. The staircase is on our property side. It is about a half a foot away from the property, but by adding that fence, the stair comes down from the porch and then turns, so it never goes towards the neighbor. It's only for access to the side yard.
And so, how will the fence be erected that it won't be on the neighbor's property?
The fence can erect to go right directly on the property line.
On the property line?
Yeah. There's enough room where you could put the fence, the privacy fence, along the property line.
Okay. I want to just back up to one thing that was said about the concrete driveway being... It's only at 41% of the lot?
So, when we did our calculations, we calculated 41%. We never got clarification where the 49% came from, and I'd be more than happy to hear from staff. But when we did the calculations, we came up with 41%.
41% of the total lot?
41% of the front yard, which is paved area versus front yard square footage.
So, you're saying this driveway is only encompassing 41% of the total front yard?
Correct. And the pictures may deceive it. They own a little bit more property to the south than the pictures may show.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll hear from staff on that in just a little bit. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the Commission? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the public want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward if you're in the chambers. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this variance is for a front, side, and paved, front yard paved area, all due to the projection of the new front yard deck and stairs, porch and stairs. This is a self-imposed hardship as no building permit was acquired ahead of time for the... For the new porch. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There is a stop-work order on the front porch, which has led us to the variance request this evening. Staff recommends denial as per protocol regarding self-imposed hardships. We do have conditions of approval if need be.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. What about the calculation on the front yard? You calculated how much?
When you're calculating the front yard, you do not include the front porch, so it's 49, not 41.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff? If not, stand for a motion. Mr. Schwartz.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time getting the number up, honestly, but I motion to approve BOZA number... Sorry, I cannot get it up.
28.
That's right. That's all right. Are you...
I motion to approve it, though. I have motion to approve BOZA, whatever the number is, and based on staff stipulations, but with a modification to be able to put the fence on the property line as requested by the applicant for rule number one or for stipulation number one.
Okay. Janet, do you have that? Can you repeat it back to me?
She's recommending approval subject to the conditions in the staff report with the amendment to condition number one that they can put the fence on the property line.
That was, I think, it was the modification that he had asked for.
That the applicant's representative asked for, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal subject to the modified condition passes six in favor and none opposed.
All right. Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2024-029, Emma Ludwig with Midwest Sign Company for property at 10500 Parallel Parkway. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Ludwig? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Emma Ludwig. I am employed with Midwest Sign Company, located at 550 Stanley Road in Kansas City, Kansas. And we are filing today for two variances for a proposed Planet Fitness that will be going in at 10500 Parallel Parkway. Our first variance is for a total of two signs, one on the front elevation and one on the back. And then the second variance is to have the signs be greater than 300 square feet. Right now, they are proposed at 586. So, we would like two signs total, one on the front and one on the back.
And you're wanting a variation of 286 square feet on each sign?
Proposed right now, each sign is 586 square feet. You guys allow three, so it's 286 over.
Per sign?
Correct. Per sign. And the reason... Do I say the reasoning now? Okay. The reason that we are filing for the first variance is so we can have a sign on the rear elevation because the rear of the building backs up to Parallel Parkway, which is a major traffic through. So, we want that visibility. And then the reason for the bigger sign, I have renderings here. The building actually is so big that a 300-square-foot sign looked kind of like a toy, like we just like put a little sticker on the building. So, we felt that 586 is extremely proportional to the facade of the front and the back, and then also to add for maximum visibility.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Mr. Murray? You speaking in favor or in opposition?
I'm speaking in favor.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I am Levert Murray, Chief Economic Development Advisor and Business Liaison in Mayor Tyrone Garner's office. I have spoke before the full Planning Commission before here recently, and I've noted that in the past, this is something I used to do quite often, serving as Economic Development Director and Director of Development before my retirement, when projects had significant impacts upon the economy of the city and the unified government. You might ask, well, will Planet Fitness have significant economic impacts upon our city? I will tell you yes, that this is a big deal, having a Planet Fitness in Kansas City, Kansas. And of course, it is noted in the staff report that the owners of Plaza the Speedway has to again address signage concerns, et cetera. And I will tell you that I met with the owners of Plaza the Speedway when negotiations first commenced to attract Planet Fitness to this site. I think Byron can attest to the fact that early on, we had numerous discussions about the signage and how the Best Buy signage affected that building and how it needed to be changed, et cetera. So, again, yes, this is a big deal. We knew from day one that Planet Fitness was needing a variance on the signage, and that's why the owners of Plaza the Speedway supported this from, again, from the very first discussion. Planet Fitness exists throughout the nation, and of course, why don't we have one in KCK? Well, we will now, but are they being overly ambitious in this request? No. All you have to do is go to 95th and Quavera and look at the Planet Fitness there. I mean, they have standard signage for these Planet Fitness and fitness facilities, and of course, on 95th and Quavera, you have signs on the front and the back of the building. Now, you might ask, well, what about the other tenants for this building? At this time, it is not known who those other tenants will be, and they will take on a very small portion of the building. And of course, they will need to address their signage requirements when they are selected and come forward. So, again, yes, this is a big deal for our economy. We'd like to see Planet Fitness, and of course, we knew from day one they needed to have signage, and they need it to be open by the holiday season. And so, we do not believe their requests to be unreasonable. And so, we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that you approve this subject request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is a variance for signage, one for the number of signs, wall signs, and for the area allowed for a wall sign. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Staff received no letters in support, no letters in opposition, no notices of violation. Staff recommends approval of the number of signs, so a total of two for the reasons stated by the applicant, but recommend denial of variance two for the increased size of the signs.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready. Commissioner Straws?
I'm going to move to actually approve both variances, one and two, on 2024-029 for size and for both the number of signs.
All right. Thank you. Motion for approval of variance one and two made by Commissioner Straws. Is that a second? Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval?
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair, does that include staff's conditions of approval?
It doesn't. It does include staff's conditions of approval.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to roll call and Director Hand, I do apologize. When I was doing my script today, I discovered something that did not look right in the conditions of approval. And so, I checked with the planner, and somehow between it being reviewed and them getting it to me, that condition number nine in the staff report is incorrect. And if you would allow me, I will read what the correct condition of approval is.
All right. Go ahead.
"In the event, a planner section thereof is given final approval, and thereafter, the landowner shall abandon said plan or a section thereof, and shall so notify the Unified Government in writing. Or in the event, the landowner shall fail to commence, as evidenced by receipt of building permits and start of construction, the planned development within 18 months after final approval has been granted, or in the case of subsequent phases each, shall be initiated within 24 months of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the entire preceding phase, or the plan will be considered abandoned. Then, in either event, such final approval shall terminate and shall be deemed null and void unless such time period is extended by the Planning Commission upon written application by the landowner. Whenever a final plan or section thereof has been abandoned, as provided in this section, no development shall take place on the property until a new development plan has been approved." And I know that it refers to a development plan, but at the beginning, it talks about the following conditions from PR 2024-023 will continue to apply to this proposal.
All right.
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, the short of that is if the Planet Fitness doesn't go through, the variance dies with it.
All right. Commissioner Straws, is that okay with you as far as your motion?
Yes, it is.
All right. So, the motion is for approval subject to staff stipulations and comments, including the revised stipulation number nine, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Schwartz, you okay with that as the second?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve both variances for BOZA 2024-029, subject to the revised conditions, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And Janet, that concludes our agenda, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, folks. We'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll begin the City Planning Commission. Thank you. Commissioners, if we could go ahead and get you to turn your cameras back on, we're going to go ahead and start it. All right, Janet, are you ready?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the November 12 meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as chair of tonight's meeting. We'll make a few introductions before we start. First up, we have Gunner Hand, who's the Director of Planning and Urban Design with us, Byron Toy also at the Department of Planning and Urban Design. We have Michael Farley on my far left, who is the Unified Government Legal Counsel, and we have the following planning and zoning, excuse me, planning commissioners present this this evening. Here in the chambers with me, we have Commissioner Dwayne Beth and Commissioner Aaron Ward. Online, we have Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Joseph Straws, Commissioner Mary Beth Schwartz, and I believe that counts everybody, right? Did I miss anybody?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll turn it over to Secretary Parker to share the opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please make sure you are visible during the meeting and use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Commissioner, sorry, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room as the application is being called, and the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, December 5, 2024. For final plats and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@ycokck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda. Items on the consent agenda are final plats, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you want removed from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, December 5, 2024, at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the October 14, 2024, Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-090, Wingfu Aaron Lau. Renewal of a special use permit for a short-term rental at 4110 South Mini Street. Plan Review Application, PR 2024-031, David Dayor. Final Plan Review for the Vertical Expansion of a Building at 1700 Kansas Avenue. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the publication in the echo for the special use permit, and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Janet. Are there any requests for any items to be removed from the consent agenda from the commissioners? Seeing none, anyone in the public want anything removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Straws?
I move that we pass the consent agenda as presented with all staff comments and stipulations.
Motion to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Straws. Is that a second, Commissioner Beth? I'm sorry, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The special use permit on the consent agenda will go to the Board of Commissioners on December 5 at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the consent agenda, and the commission will consider the non-consent agenda. We have two items that we're going to hear together and vote on separately. Change of Zone Application, COZ 2024-016, Steve Sobek. Change of Zone from AG Agriculture District to RP1 Planned Single Family District to create 241 residential lots at 12024 Leavenworth Road. Mr. Chairman, I know the agenda says that it is a different number of lots, but it is 241.
Thank you.
Plat Application, Plat 2024-010, I'm sorry, 0110, Preliminary Plat, Northland Park, to create 241 residential lots at 12024 Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo for the change of zone, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
Yes, I've heard from both proponents and opponents of this case.
Yes, I have too.
Mr. Chairman, was that you and Commissioner Ward?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we bring the applicant forward, we do have a white truck out front or out on the side park that is running. So if that is your truck, you might want to go check it. If you are in the market for a white truck, you might want to go out and check it out to see if it suits your needs, because it's already ready, willing, and and running. So it should be able to provide a quick getaway. But there is a white truck, and I believe there's a security officer out there working on it right now. But if that white truck is yours, you might check it. Thank you. Okay, is the applicant available? Is that going to be you, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners, Kurt Peterson with Pulse Nellie, 900 West 48th Place, here on behalf of the applicant, specifically the proposed home builder here, D.R. Horton. We have the vice president for the Kansas City Metro Area for D.R. Horton, who is in charge of everything, D.R. Horton, in our entire area, and that's Brian Wasser here sitting beside me. D.R. Horton, quick, quick background on who the proposed developer here is of these of these homes, is the nation's largest home builder, and I have the privilege right now, working with them across the entire metro and all cities of all sorts and sizes. And we're excited to bring this project before the commission here tonight. I would say if I was to point out one thing that is related, when you understand who this company is, is they have the best warranty, one that there's there's nothing like it in the entire Kansas City area that I've seen. And it's incredible, and it stands for quality, and they stand behind their homes. So given that we have a detailed staff report, and I'll say very detailed conditions of approval, especially when it comes to quality, the Piper Delaware Design Guidelines that apply to a neighborhood like this, I'm just going to say, Chairman, on this one, we stand ready, of course, to answer questions where we find all of staff's 1 through 30 stipulations or conditions of approval acceptable. And again, if there's anything that y'all have questions, I'll be happy to address them when the time comes.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Peterson?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Ward, Commissioner Ward.
Sure. Obviously, I got some calls from people about the about the project, and just doing a little research on D.R. Horton, a lot of stuff on, a lot of stuff online about quality of work and all kinds of good stuff that is a little troubling. Can anybody answer those kind of questions?
Absolutely, absolutely. So first of all, I'd probably start here. D.R. Horton was founded in the 70s, you know, and now it's all over the country in scores of markets, and we're in the millions of homes. I mean, so many homes, and so there's always always going to be something when you Google online, whether it's any sort of client I've ever had, right? If they're of any size, they're going to have some people that complain, because folks tend to complain more than people give praise, even if they're 1% of the people. So that's the first comment. But the second comment is, I guess I'll just go back to what I found so impressive. And I could go more like five minutes on this, and I'm going to do 30 seconds, then really, Commissioner Then really, Commissioner, if you want to talk more, I want to talk more. But on this idea of warranty, which just growing up in Kansas City, you know, over my lifetime, owning a couple of homes, I've never seen anything like this. There is a 10-year structural, so anything structural warranty that D.R. Horton stands behind a home they build. They build that home, and they will stand behind it. And I've heard from a number of testimonials from people that have these homes. It's incredible, and there's other levels of warranties within that. So I would just say this to kind of summarize what I just said. Absolutely, when you're talking about the nation's largest home builder with millions of homes in markets all over the place, you can find all sorts of complaints just because you're always going to find 1% of people that just, either there's something that happened and they get fixed, or some people just aren't happy. But this is a company that, in this Kansas City market, not a single home will be outside of the purview of this man right here. And he has an amazing reputation in every D.R. Horton community in the country. This is how D.R. Horton intended it, is localized. So again, back to Brian, he's in charge of everything that happens in the metro. His reputation, his experience is impeccable, and I can guarantee you that whether it's those warranties or just the quality of the homes that they build, Wyandotte County is going to be proud of these homes, this neighborhood.
Thank you. Other questions? I'm just going to run a couple of things by you, Mr. Peterson. So I went out today, and I went to Peculiar, to the subdivision of Peculiar. I went to the one in Spring Hill, and then I drove it to Platte City. So I did about 90 miles today on this to look at the houses and to get some more information. So it's my understanding it's a 1-2-10 warranty. One year is basically the bumper-to-bumper or wall-to-wall warranty. And then there's a two-year mechanical on all the mechanical components, correct? And then there's the 10-year structural warranty on the foundation and everything else. And then it's also my understanding that all the homes will get James Hardy cement board siding?
Yeah, that's one of our materials. Yes, Brandon's saying yes.
And then all the fascias that I saw were wrapped in vinyl, so it's not maybe completely maintenance-free, but virtually maintenance-free? Okay. Also, double-wall construction, that's a standard feature?
Yes.
And then a borat termite treatment on every home that's done?
That's right.
The BCI joists, that's a different type of construction using a different type of flooring system, correct?
Yeah, that's right, Chairman.
What I was told is it's 20% greater strength than conventional, comparably sized dimensional lumber. And then it's my understanding you build about 90,000 homes per year?
The latest number? Yeah, I was going to say last year.
Last year was about 90,000 homes, okay. All right, I think that's about all I have. Any Commissioner Schwartz?
Can you just re-gig affirm, what do you believe is going to be the average price point for the new homes or just a range?
Absolutely.
Do we know what that's going to be?
Question was price point. So as you've heard me say on any project, whether it's apartment rents or homes for sale, it's a prediction, we won't get the first lots delivered, just put homes on for 18 months, plus or minus something like that. So but this is a smart prediction based on what we're seeing right now. You know, 90% of these homes will have basements, and a lot of those people want the basements finished. So there's a range here. Where we landed, the latest, we were just talking about this, call it the 420 to 480. It's right in there.
All right. Other questions, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, and then are you planning, and just I guess confirm again, what kind of amenities will the subdivision have in HOA? Or do you have that figured out quite yet?
We do, Commissioner. Thank you for the question. We'll have a community pool and clubhouse. We'll have trails and open fields for playing and recreating. We'll have a 10-foot trail that if we can put it up if we need to, I can point these out. But in the northern part of the development, in the southern part of the development, and along with all the sidewalks through the neighborhood, what we'll do is it connects you from both public streets on each side and then all the way down to the school there to the southwest, which is Piper Prairie Elementary School. So also, we'll have a detention pond up in the, this isn't our color version, but up in the northwest, right, you were zooming in on that last slide. Up in the northwest, there's going to be an amenity-type pond that we'll have there, so a water feature. And then lastly, we are donating just over two and a half acres, that's turn funny, but down in the southern part of the development to the UG to have a public park. So that's just a sampling, Commissioner, of the amenities we plan to offer.
Yeah, other questions? And there is access, or there's a walking path that will lead into the school from the subdivision, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, Gunner, I don't know if you've memorized it, but there's walking path in the pack, there you go. See, it's slightly colored, and that's turn, I'm so sorry. You have to turn clockwise 90 degrees. So the school would be down from where the cursor is. Do you see how Gunner's showing you there? Yep, and then if you go north, Gunner, which is left, see that purple there? That's where I was saying, there's 10-foot path in the north and the south that gets you from the public streets to the sidewalks that gets you to the school. So you never have to walk on the street if you're a school kid or a parent to get there.
And the subdivision will have sidewalks throughout?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Sorry. And then what kind of reputation does the builder have on enforcing construction timelines? And when I say that, I'm talking about like on a weekly basis, just so neighbors can be aware of when they can expect them to start in the morning and end at the evening, and are they really good at upholding those, just so the neighbors don't have to be overly concerned about hearing construction noises at 5:00 a.m. and having them go until 9:00 p.m.?
That's a good question. That's a topic that we spoke at at our neighborhood meeting within approximately the last 30 days. And that question was asked, and our answer was, again, the nice thing about the structure of D.R. Horton, while it's the nation's largest, Brian Wasser's in charge of everything in the metro, and he was there with me at the neighborhood meeting and assured that we have a plan. First of all, we follow UG guidelines for sure, requirements when it comes to working hours. But we'll have a plan, and we'll stick to it. And Brian gave out his phone number and email address personally to all the neighbors, and he'll give it to anybody else. So if there ever was an issue, you know who to contact, he'll take care of it. Thank you for that question.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this petition? Please come forward. If you're in the audience, come to the microphone. If you are online, raise your hand. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, anyone in opposition?
Go ahead, please name an address. Good evening. Mike Nichols, 3108 North 118th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Your land is a finite resource. Wyandotte County already is one-third the size and area of pretty much every county in the state of Kansas, particularly Leavenworth and Johnson Counties, our neighbors. And while when you go around through Piper, it might seem like there's all sorts of undeveloped land in the area, that's all that we have left. And it is much less than what our neighboring counties have. We will never be able to compete with those counties or sheer number of house tops if that's what we're trying to do as far as maximizing our tax revenue to support this community. And so it's really important that any development that we do is done right because what we have to do is get the most value out of every single acre that we have left. This project is not going to do that. This project is too dense for the area that it has been proposed for. As the staff report says, it's not compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. The developer and the builders have taken Pavilions of Piper, which is the neighborhood I live in, and the Newberry development next to it, and kind of averaged the lot sizes of those two developments and fit somewhere in between those. That doesn't really give a very accurate indication of the appropriate lot size for that area. It's nowhere near the quarter-acre lot size that's appropriate under the development master plan. Our neighborhood Pavilions of Piper, the area that we live in, was originally designed to be a smaller part of a larger development. Our homes were intentionally meant to be partially maintenance-provided, thus have smaller lots, ranch-style homes. The rest of the lots platted for the rest of that 80 acres were not going to be nearly that small a lot. So it was never meant to be an 80-acre development of lots of that size. So to take 40 or 32 houses that are there and use those small lot sizes that were never meant to be representative of an entire neighborhood and use that to average and not even, you know, get to the same size as the neighboring community Newberry is just not indicative of a compatible size with the rest of the surrounding area. Moreover, multifamily and higher-density, single-family housing belongs closer to commercial corridors with lots sizes getting larger as you get further out from those corridors. And so maybe this project makes sense in some other part of the community. I don't know that that's true, but it certainly does not make sense where it has been proposed. The developer has said they need this kind of density. They've already tried to reduce the density a little bit, but they said they need this density in order to make this project work for them financially. And I would suggest if they can't make this project work for them financially without variances from our master plan, then maybe it's not the right project for this location. This proposed neighborhood will be one of the largest, if not the largest neighborhoods in Piper when it is completed, more housing than any other neighborhood other than maybe the combined neighborhoods of Whispering Ridge. It will set the tone for future housing development in the area. And it's a big gamble to approve a project of that size in the hands of a builder like D.R. Horton, which is not only the largest, but also probably the most notorious builder in this country. Those of you in real estate business, you probably ask around. For those that aren't in the business, ask your real estate colleagues what they know about this builder. And while I have nothing bad to say about Brian and how he presented himself at our neighborhood meeting, upon looking into the company further, it is clear that they have left a trail, not just of minor social media complaints on Facebook, multimillion-dollar class-action lawsuits in multiple states throughout this country due to alleged subpar construction. After recently entering the Kansas City market, it appears that this will be their largest project by far of the other projects in the area. I know that Chairman mentioned that he'd been to some of their developments, as have I, in Platte City, Liberty, looked at the ones in Peculiar. This is far larger than any of the others that I have seen that they have done. So in essence, we will be the guinea pig for a community of this size for D.R. Horton in the Kansas City metro area, and I don't think that that's what Piper deserves to be. I think that that's part of the reason that when we had the original neighborhood meeting back in July, that the developer refused to disclose to us who the builder was, which did not engender a lot of trust with us, with the developer at that time. If you do approve this plan, I ask that you require that Phase 2 be turned into Phase 1, so that this project starts on 123rd Street. That allows, first of all, for this to have the least amount of impact at the outset on the neighboring communities. Right now, they would be coming in and out of the same entrance. It's a Pavilions of Piper neighborhood uses. If they come in off 123rd Street, there are no other neighborhoods currently using that entrance. It will also ensure that they actually intend to build Phase 2, that they actually intend to have a separate construction entrance, and that they actually intend to have a separate route of egress and ingress. Because as everybody here is probably aware, that was not part of the original plan that was presented to us in July. I think it became clear to the developer and their partners that that was going to be a major issue. So they secured contracts on additional land. Now, the problem is that when they did that, they increased the number of houses built significantly. And so if you look at the way this is drawn up, it really did not alleviate much in the way of the amount of traffic coming in and out of Leavenworth Road off 119th Street because most of those houses are going to continue to come in off 119th Street. Basically, the only houses that makes sense to use the other entrance are those that are on the additional land purchased to have the entrance off 123rd and maybe 10% of the other houses in the initial development.
Excuse me, Mr. Nichols, you have one minute, sir.
Thank you. If the developer can't agree to that, which should make no difference to them, where they start, one side or the other, then we should have real concerns about whether they're actually serious about what they say. They have not committed to us, they're providing a separate construction entrance that will not impact our neighborhoods. If that is their goal, this should not be any problem for them whatsoever. If they cannot agree to that, then we should have real concerns about whether they ever actually intend to build Phase 2 or whether it was just added to make this application more palatable. My concern is, you look at the rest of this, they're going to build Phase 1, and they're going to say it's too expensive to go add that additional infrastructure over in Phase 2. We're just going to need to build Phase 3 and Phase 4 because that's where the roads are already going, and we'll never get that second entrance. And all the construction for this entire project will go off 119th Street as it exists now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Mark Montoy, 11802 Delavan Avenue. Actually, again, I actually live in the same residence with Mike. And the only concern I don't think he addressed was actually the infrastructure for the overall community, i.e. the school district right now. The school district is well overwhelmed. I've been in contact with the school district, they gave me some information. So I'm very concerned about the school district right now. Second thing, as far as the overall, the road capacity, Leavenworth Road right now is in very bad condition right now. So the additional traffic is going to only add to it because right now I see that there's actually another company called Capital Electric that's working, has a huge motor pool off 123rd, and they have heavy equipment that goes constantly. Sometimes they have convoys of vehicles going down Leavenworth Road. And my concern is Leavenworth Road is just not met for that type of capacity of vehicles. That's a concern I have. And again, after seeing what they presented us as far as the overall style and the finish and so forth on the houses they want to build, I got a feeling based on that, it's only going to bring the value of our homes down. That was my major, another concern I had. As far as the issue with, there's also, we noticed that the state of Kansas is actually in charge of the property behind us now, too, which they're going to be buddying up against, too, which the state of Kansas actually is using that as a reserve now, too, which it can no longer be addressed or as far as being touched. And my concern is with that new development, too, what's going to happen with that, too? School capacity, talked about that, and value of the homes. And I think that's really all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, would, Mr.? Yes, sir. Anyone else going to speak? Please come forward now. This will be our last one. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Neil Palmer. I reside at 2600 North 131st Street. I also own property at 115th and Donahue, which diagonally is less than a half a mile from the northeast corner of the proposed development. I don't know how many of you remember 1991 when we were annexed by the city. I've been in Piper now for 33 and a half years. We had a big meeting at the George Mine Hall. When the county and the city got together and decided there wasn't going to be a Piper town, we were going to absorb us, and, you know, a whole lot of stuff got wrote down. A lot of promises were made about all of us keeping the ag residential, suburban residential, not high-density housing. And I know there's a master plan. I'm sure these esteemed people have gone through and crossed every T and dotted I, apply with the codes, all the comments. I'm glad to hear that quality is a great thing for this builder. They're obviously represented by a great lawyer. But quality is not the issue here, it's density. And when you look at this project next to everything that's going on in that area, go Clearback to Liker Gardens, Dub's Dread, the development that's across 123rd from the fire station, this is an anomaly in our community. I'm sure they've done a traffic study. You can make a traffic study, do anything you want it to say. I know this, you know, this is right in the heart of Piper. We don't have a main street, we don't have a water tower, we don't even have a general store. Our general store got turned into a liquor shop. And so I'm all for development. I want everybody to, you know, have the American dream, to own a home. I got to believe one of the reasons they picked this location is because of the phenomenal school district we have. You know, Piper's one of the top-rated school districts in the state, if not the country. Some of you may know, I was on the board there for almost 18 years. I want to be very clear, I am not representing the board, the district, or anybody else. I'm representing the taxpayers, being one myself, okay? All the tax burden in Piper goes on rooftops. We have very few businesses, and all the businesses that have come to our area, as soon as their tax abatements are relinquished, their assessments go down, and we don't gain any money. Now, I checked what's on the website. Right now, the Piper District is already at 8% overcapacity, and that includes the new high school we just opened right down the road, okay? 2.3 kids per home, that used to be the standard. I don't know if it still is or not. That's another 550 students over time coming into our district. We don't have the billfold to fund bond issue after bond issue after bond issue to take care of unsustained growth. And if you guys want to let these folks come to our community, I suggest you get with the school district and have some sort of surcharge stipend, just like you do stormwater, just like something else, where we can help support the quality education we need from this influx of students because it will be a burden on the district. You know, this is right next to the new elementary. It's right next to the original Piper High School that is the icon of our community. The district is the community, the community is the district. We're all for this, but this just doesn't fit with what we were promised in 1991 and what the community is all about here. I hope you would send this back as representatives of the people to figure out, is there a density of this project at this location that works so they can make their pro forma work that fits with us, and we can all be good neighbors over this? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Will Ruder here with the Home Builders Association of Greater Kansas City. It's 600 East 103rd Street in Kansas City, Missouri. As a matter of policy, the HBA does not take land use positions, so that's why I waited until the end to speak, just generally to add some context and some information related to housing supply in general and its effect on communities. There are essentially five supply-side constraints that will constitute a local housing market. They are lots, labor, lumber, lending, and laws. And so we're here tonight to talk about the land side of things. It is the most difficult inventory that exists to create in the housing space. You cannot create more land, you have what you have. And so in 2005, 2006, there were 52,000 residential lots in various stages of production within the Kansas City metro. Today, there are fewer than 12,000. The opportunity is to add housing inventory, because you cannot build on land that does not exist or will support a unit of housing. So as we look at the supply-side constraints, we do know that, you know, we just went through a presidential election, this is not a political body, but both the Republican and Democratic nominees for president were talking about the lack of housing supply. So this is fundamentally a conversation about housing supply and the ability to add to existing inventory. There is no way to build into a level, a higher level, or an improved level of affordability, but there is also no way to achieve stable prices and housing options absent home building. So as, as there are, is the finite capital is circling the metro, looking for opportunities to deploy that capital on behalf of the would-be homebuyers within that jurisdiction, it is looking for an entry point. And if a barrier to entry is created, it makes that capital much less deployable within that jurisdiction. And so communities are typically in search of, in my work across the metro, there are three fundamental goals of a community. They want low density, they want low taxes, and they want stable services. The problem is, you can only pick two of those three. Having low taxes, low density, and stable services, that's a combination that doesn't exist. So if you want low density, you either have to increase taxes or cut services. If you want stable services and low density, you need to raise taxes. And so property tax is a problem across every jurisdiction, is not unique to KCK or Wyandotte County, it is universal. And so as communities are faced with the issue of stabilizing property taxes, they've really got one of two choices. They can either raise taxes on your existing tax base, or you can create new taxpayers. And so I am here tonight as an evangelist for housing supply, and would be happy to provide any additional information to the commission or the governing body. Please do reach out to me, my contact information is available. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruder. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go back to Mr. Peterson. Can we address a couple of issues that were brought up? One, the acquisition of the, basically the 123rd Street access point over to the existing development. That is, can you remind me what phase that's going to be?
Absolutely. I don't know if professional staff wants to put up the phasing point, they might have
We've got it in our packet, but it'd just be easier to see it.
People can understand. So the request from the property owner was taking Phase One and making it Phase Two, and Phase Two, Phase One, so starting up in the northwest. So one is, you brought up some history, try not to go on and on, but it's good, the neighbors sure know it from our neighborhood meeting. There's two neighborhood meetings, one in the summer that are, we hire a lot developer to build the lots for us, and then we build the homes, so our lot developer did that meeting. That actually was one thing that was brought up, was the idea of hiding who D.R. Horton was. No, it was just the lot developer we're in, I don't know if we've even said all the community, but lots and lots of communities right now across the metro, and lot developers take a lot of the land use approvals through, that's all that was happening. And then at this stage in the game, both Brian and I stepped in, so.
I didn't know until last week.
Yeah, there you go. So, see, D.R. Horton has been there the whole time, it's just the lot developer was running that part of the process. So, back to this phasing point, the lot developer heard this summer at the first neighborhood meeting, man, we don't like that you just have access to that 119th Street that this developer will build. So the developer went out, we went out, and got under contract that all that ground that's labeled Phase Two, which now ready to go there, that provides that second access point. So that's the access issue in response, frankly, to that neighborhood meeting this summer. But the phasing point is really totally different. What I heard our neighbor, our resident bringing up was, what happens if D.R. Horton starts at Phase One and never goes to Phase Two? And there's a couple of points there, and that was the impetus, I guess, you know, flip them. One is, our sanitary sewers are coming from that southeast, so you're never going to bring sanitary sewers all the way and start in the far corner, it's just, you would never do that. Also, as Brian and I were just talking about, him being the ultra-professional, but me being around, you never start at the back of your residential development and build to the front. So both those reasons, especially the sanitary sewer part, that's going to be Phase One down in the corner as we looked at it. However, if there's a concern that Phase Two would never happen, I'll tell you this, they never would have taken down the ground and spent that much money on ground if they weren't going to develop. It would be absolutely financially disastrous, right, to have ground you're never going to activate. So that's, that's the phasing point.
Just to clarify, the HOA amenity is going to be a pool, correct?
Correct.
And that's going to be in Phase One?
It's going to be, I don't know if we have the other drawing, we can see where it lands, technically, just at the northern part of Phase One. If we can't see it, we can't see it, but yes.
Is it is in Phase One?
Yeah, that's my understanding, right? Yeah. Exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay, because my concern, I don't want another Piper landing where we build three phases and we don't get a pool until we demand it.
Lengthy discussion that the neighbors were right to bring it up, brought up that point.
Just real quick, from our perspective, I mean, we want the.
Go ahead, I need you to give your name and address, just for the record.
Brian Wosser with D.R. Horton, I live in Lenexa, Kansas. So our philosophy amenities are, they need to be built up front, they need to be built in Phase One, because too many communities, communities we've been involved with ourselves, they don't get built, which lead to issues down the road legally and whatever else, so.
I mean, you say communities you've been involved with, you mean ones that you've taken over, that were not built, or ones that you all developed?
We have been in plenty of communities where we've gone in, amenities were promised. Amenities where we've gone, and we've purchased vacant finished lots where amenities were promised to previous homeowners, they weren't built, we have septum and built.
So the original developers did not build the amenities, and you had to build them when you took over the lot?
Contractually, we have protections to make sure those things are built now, and we want them in Phase One, and we want them built up front.
All right. So the people will see what they get when they're moving in.
And just to be clear for the record, that was at our second neighborhood meeting, within the last 30 days, we had a good, I think, a good substantive discussion on that with neighbors.
What about a traffic study?
Yes, traffic study was done, absolutely, and it helps now that we've added, to disperse the traffic, we've added the west access to 123rd, east access to 119th. And yeah, I don't know if any specific questions about it, but we definitely had that, and staff reviewed it.
I mean, any specific impact to Leavenworth Road? I mean, what?
The, the only thing that I found at least notable was.
And I guess we can get to staff with that in just a minute as well.
Sure. I guess briefly just touch on it, the only thing that all is notable is, again, it keeps throwing me that that's turned, but i- if you're going southbound on 119th Street, which is not built past Pavilions now, but if you're going southbound there, during the AM peak specifically, it said there could be a 4.2 car stack trying to make a left out. That's, as a guy that reads these all the time, that's the only thing that drew my attention, which, is that great? No. Is it, just to be honest, when you, development, is it awful? No, it's not awful either.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, it's time we'll go ahead and go to Director Han and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is a change of zone and plat for 241 lots, going from AG Wyco, which is the former unincorporated zoning code that doesn't exist anymore, to R1 and R1B. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Before this evening, staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, there are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including that it be rezoned to RP1 and RP1B, which would trigger staff review of all future single-family homes to meet the design guidelines inside of the area plan. We mentioned, or the applicant mentioned the park. The applicant is also requesting, and this is built into those conditions of approval, a deviation from the area plan for percentages of lot widths, not lot areas.
All right. Questions for staff? Commissioner Straws?
I just have one question about them donating a portion of this piece of property back to the UG for a public park. Not quite for sure if, you know, if we can't handle the maintenance of that, as we struggle to maintain the maintenance of what we currently have, who's going to maintain that donated part of this land as a public park? Who's, who's going to be responsible for that if the UG cannot keep up with the maintenance on that piece of property?
Director Hand, Director of Planning and Design, we've been in coordination with the Department of Parks and Recreation. It's been stated in the area plan, and a known amenity for the community for a long time to have some sort of park. So the Parks, Parks and Recreation has had, not a lot, but a pot of money that they have been anticipating to both acquire and build a park in the Piper area. This would be a donation where all of that funding would go to the build out of the park. It is not enough to complete a 2.5 acre park, but to answer your question, it would become UG-owned land maintained by the park, Parks and Recreation Department, until they were able to do the upgrades as, as, as desired.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Straws?
And which one do we, where are we going first? What do we need first, Janet?
Change of zones.
All right, so in the entrance of trying to get this right, I would recommend approval of COZ 2024-016 with the staff comments of changing the RP1 and RP1B for future development and standards.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval of change of zone, 2024-016, is there a second? Commissioner Schwartz, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call?
I just would like to have a clarification, please. Does that include the requested deviations in item number one?
Commissioner Straws, was that subject to the staff stipulations and deviations?
Yes, it was.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, that's okay with you?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Beth? Ernst?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application, COZ 16, to RP1 and RP1B single-family districts, subject to the conditions in the staff report, including the deviations, passes four in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. Change of zone application will go forward to the Unified Government, ordered Commissioners on December 5th. I'll now entertain a motion on the plat, Commissioner Straws.
I move that we approve plat 2024-017 with staff stipulation and comments and deviations, including the RP, the one, deviations in one, including the RP1 and RP1B.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval of plat 2024-017 made by Commissioner Straws, is there a second? Commissioner Schwartz, is that a second?
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call?
Schwartz?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Nope.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this plat, subject to the stated conditions for the change of zone, passes four in favor and two opposed.
All right, and the plat will not go forward, is that correct, Janet?
That is correct, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Our next application is change of zone, COZ 2024-025, Stan Richards. Change of zone from AG Agriculture and MP2 Planned General Industrial Districts to MP2 Planned General Industrial District for a parking lot for an existing truck terminal at 9711 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, and furtherings of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact concerning this application?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Yes, sir.
Please, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
Stan Richards, 600 Gillum Road, Wilmington, Ohio, 454, I'm sorry, 45177. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and staff, thank you for the opportunity. I represent Raymar Land Corporation and RR Plus L Carriers. We are an LTL trucking company, national company, we have 140 service centers across the United States. We started out as a one-man, one-truck operation in 1965 with Mr. Ralph Lawrence Roberts, Senior, and we have grown to over 21,000 employees with our company now. We have over 35,000 pieces of equipment, including trucks and trailers on the road today. We purchased this property through a auction, a bankruptcy auction due to Yellow Ridgeway Freight going out of business last fall. We purchased it right around April of this year, and during the purchase, we applied for a business license. At the time of applying for that business license to operate, it was discovered that there was a portion of land that was made for parking, I think somewhere around 2004, 2006, from Yellow Ridgeway Freight, that had never been zoned correctly. And with the transference of ownership, the city has asked us to go through the process. We're happy to do so. So that's what's going on tonight, and we respectfully ask for approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case, in favor or in opposition, please come forward or raise your hand, you're online. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hand and get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is a split-zone property, AG and MP2 to be rezoned to MP2 as proposed. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, there are notices of violation. I'll pause on this really quick, you can see the old AG zone land here. Basically, this was in, as the applicant noted earlier, in the early odds, received a indefinite special use permit for a parking lot. So the way that staff was able to maintain the intent of that special use permit, which would then basically be usurped by the change of zone, is if it all goes MP2, then we had a deed restriction that this would be retained as a parking lot in perpetuity to allow for that same sort of buffer. You can see that originally, when yellow freight came in, they set back from State Avenue. Then they came back, and in that buffer, added this surface parking lot. So we're trying to keep that buffer of the, of the facility back. Currently, there's no proposals here. If there were any proposals in the future, because it is a planned district, it would have to come back to the Planning Commission for review, as well as staff, to again, maintain that potential buffer. There were some original conditions of approval on the special use permit that, regarding landscaping and buffering, that are, become our, that we restated as our conditions of approval. Some of that landscaping and buffering has deteriorated over time, as it's been vacant for quite some time by whenever yellow freight left. So staff agrees, excuse me, staff recommends approval with conditions, including that landscape buffer along State Avenue, and the covenant for parking.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Straws?
I move that we approve COZ 2024-025, according to staff stipulations and comments. And that's it.
Motion to approve change of zone application, 2024-025, made by Commissioner, Commissioner Straws, is that a second? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Schwartz had to leave, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone, COZ 2024-025, COZ 2024-025, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to hear two applications together next. Change of zone application COZ 2024-026, Austin Thompson. Change of zone from R1B, single family district, to RP5 Planned Apartment District to convert a school building into apartments at 313 North 10th Street. And plat 2024-029, preliminary and final plat, split log estates for seven lots at 313 North 10th. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the windout echo and the notices to property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson and I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas 66007. And just as Ms. Parker stated, we are looking to convert an old school, school building into a 20 to 25 apartment unit complex there off of 10th and Split Log. We worked with staff pretty closely on this and we just did have one request. We accept all the conditions of the staff's approval with the exception of number one. We would like to remove the condition that states prior to final development plan, the driveway entrance of split log shall be relocated further east rather than its current location. We had previous discussions with staff on this location, which our original design was located off of 10th Street. After comments we got from the traffic department, basically they said they would rather have the entrance on the less busier street, which was then we relocated it to split log. But now that staff is requesting that entrance to move farther east, the contours, the topo of that street drops dramatically after the entrance. And so that just from a design perspective, it just doesn't work if we move it any farther east. So we'd be, you know, more than willing to either go back to 10th Street or if we can leave it where it's at. But going farther east on split log is just from a design perspective, doesn't work. And so we just asked that we can modify that stipulation number one.
Alright, anything else?
No, that is it.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director of Planning resign. Sorry, I got a paper cut. This is a changes, excuse me, change of zone and a, and associated with a plat, as noted by the applicant. This is in the central area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are history and notices of violation on this property as it's been vacant for a long time, which would be addressed by the proposed redevelopment. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including the multifamily design guidelines, some sidewalk repairs, and that it would have to come back for a final development plan. Regarding condition number one, that, that condition was a comment from our engineering department to move it back. I'm not 100% sure if it meets or doesn't meet a warrant or if they just wanted to do it. So we could kick the, we could kick the proverbial ball down the road if we'd like. They do have to come back for a final development plan and we could just strike that condition and let it play out in FDP. We're still gonna probably request it to be moved.
Alright, what's your recommendation?
I think the easiest thing, instead of amending it to say, we don't want to move it because we do want it to be moved, would be to just strike condition number one and let it play out in the final development plan.
Alright, and would that be stricken from the change of zone request or the plat?
Oh, it should be stricken from both.
Alright, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Strauss?
Change of zone first, right?
Yes.
Correct, yes, please.
I'm getting the hang of this. Alright. I move to approve COZ 2024-026, striking condition number one and all of the other comments and staff stipulations.
You're only striking condition number one. All the other staff stipulations and comments remain, correct?
Yes, sorry. I probably worded that a little wrong, but you, yes.
That's alright. Motion made for approval of change of zone application 2024-026, striking condition number one, condition of approval number one. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application 26, subject to the conditions in the staff report and with striking item number one, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion for the plat. Commissioner Strauss?
I move that we approve plat 2024-029 and striking condition number one, but approving all of the rest of the staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made to approve plat 2024-029, striking staff recommendation condition number one, came from Commissioner Strauss. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat 29 with the conditions in the staff report, minus condition number one, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The change of zone application will go forward to the Board of Commissioners on December 5th at 7:00 PM in this room.
Mr. Chairman, we now have two more applications that we're going to hear. Change of zone application COZ 2024-029, Reed Khalil. Change of zone from CP2 Planned General Business District to CP3 Planned Commercial District for a used automotive sales lot with light repair at 7521 Nebraska Avenue and special use permit SP 2024-096. Special use permit for a used automotive sales lot with light repair at 7521 Nebraska Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the windout echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Khalil, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off with your name and address.
Uh, yes, can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Reed Khalil. And my address is 7521 Nebraska Avenue. I'll just give you that. Kansas City, Kansas 66112. We've received the report from the staff of the planning. We, we will comply with all of it. We have no issues. The, just one comment I would like to really say about the zoning. The reason we've asked for that zoning change just to improve our opportunities for future businesses that we want to do or if we want to sell the property. Actually, we had like glossed on an opportunity to sell the property because it, it was for landscaping slash, you know, parking subtraction there and it needed a C3 zoning and the deal did not go through. So we've asked for the zoning change and we are willing to comply with all the requirements just so we can, you know, improve our chances in the future if we are to sell this property or do other things that it's not allowed in CP2. Again, all the stipulations and conditions that the planning department has for us, we will fully comply and we have no issues with all.
Alright, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, that's it.
Alright, questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director of Planning resign. Again, this change of zone is also being heard with special use permit for auto sales, rental and light repair. This is in the planned KCK area in the midtown neighborhood just off State Avenue, the State Avenue corridor. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There's a history of notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends denial of the change of zone as everything that the applicant wishes to do with their property is allowed in C2, as noted. An approval of the special use permit with conditions. I paused on the zone map to note that there is no C3 zoning anywhere in this part of the corridor. Additionally, as the applicant noted, the request for C3 is speculative and we don't support speculative rezonings.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ernst?
Just to clarify, Gunner, nothing would change someone's ability in the future to ask for the change of zoning and the, the different, the C3, correct?
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning resign. When somebody asks for a change of zone now or in the future, to answer your question, yes, it could be applied for in the future. We always ask for the project to be known. Otherwise, we would just be changing zone all over the place for speculative real estate sales.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? If not, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend denial of petition 2024-029 for the reasons given.
Alright, motion made to deny change of zone application 2024-029 made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second? Commissioner Strauss?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of COZ 2024-029 for the reasons stated by staff, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Alright, and a motion for the special use permit? Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition SP 2024-096, subject to all staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion made for approval of special use application 2024-096 made by Commissioner Strauss. Is that a second, Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, I look like Commissioner Ernst tonight, but you know, I do second, I do second that, that motion.
Alright, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024-096, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Both of these applications will be heard once again on December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we have two more applications that'll be heard together. Change of zone application COZ 2024-030, Alicia Tomlin. Change of zone from C1 Limited Business and R1 Single Family Districts to CP1 Planned Limited Business District for a drive-through restaurant at 7957 State Avenue. And plan review application PR 2024-033, final development plan for a drive-through restaurant at 7957 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the windout echo and the notices to property owners. Do any members of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tomlin, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off with your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alicia Tomlin and the address for the business is, my corporate office is 7250 Dallas Parkway, Suite 800, Plano, Texas 75024.
Okay, and tell us about your project.
Our project is a Little Caesar's restaurant with indoor, inside pickup area and a drive-through as well. I think it's kind of a very popular brand. Pretty sure all of us, especially if any of us played ball, grew up on a lot of Little Caesar's pizza. And it is located at 7957 State Avenue and we feel that the use is appropriate with the other surrounding uses in this area. And we're excited about growing and expanding in the Kansas City area and market.
Alright, anything else?
Um, no, sir. We're, we've, we've looked, we went through all of the staff recommendations and we have made appropriate changes and we're in the process of the, getting the replat started in order to have the buffer in the rear and the other items as requested. And it's a, I think a pretty straightforward project. We've also are updating our exterior elevations to comply and are really excited about getting this project moving forward.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director of Planning resign. Again, this change of zone is paired with plan review 2024-0C3 for a drive-through, excuse me, a drive-through restaurant. This is in the planned KCK area in the midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. I'll pause here quickly just to note that, as you can see in this, in this rezon, in the zoning map, when the original sub, excuse me, the strip mall was developed, it, it was split zoned to maintain R1 in the rear and C1 up against State Avenue corridor. The intent of that was to maintain a buffer to the single family neighborhood directly to the south. Staff does recommend approval with, approval with conditions. This also includes a request by the applicant for deviations from the commercial design guidelines, namely, again, we worked with them the best we can, but namely, there's still parking in front of, in front of the building. And again, the commercial design guidelines ask for the parking to be on the side or the rear, so it's on the side and a little bit in the front. So we were able to move stuff around and work with them the best we could, but they still are, they still land with those deviations as included in the conditions of approval as well as, again, making that back half of the parcel that was currently zoned, excuse me, R1, when it gets all rezoned to CP, if and when it gets all rezoned to CP2, to maintain that as open space as a buffer in perpetuity.
Alright, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, motion is in order. Just be one, I will need two motions. First one for change of zone. Commissioner Ernst?
First the buckeys and now we get our Little Caesar's back. I move-
Why not roll?
Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition COZ twenty twenty four day zero three zero, subject to all staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve change of zone application twenty twenty four dash zero three zero made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second? Commissioner Straws?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty four dash zero three zero, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor, none opposed.
All right, and now I'll need a motion for the plan review. Final plan review. Commissioner Ernst?
I move the KCK City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition PR twenty twenty three day zero three three, subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. A motion made to approve PR twenty twenty four dash zero thirty three made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second? Straws?
It is.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve PR twenty twenty four dash zero three three, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The change of zone application will go forward to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners on December fifth at seven PM. So I guess it's a pizza.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
You beat me to it.
This is my show, Commissioner Straws. You're, you're a supporting player.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're going to move on to the special use permit applications. First one is SP twenty twenty four dash zero eight two, Caesar Villava. Special use permit for short term rental at twenty eight oh one South Ninth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November twelve, twenty twenty four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Villava, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off with your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do.
Hi, this is Cesar Villalba and I think my, the lady I, I hired to host and manage my properties, the one that gonna speak in my behalf.
That's Samantha Ramirez?
Yes.
Okay. Samantha Ramirez, I have you queued up, ready to speak to, if you would, give us your name and address.
Hi, yes, my name is Samantha Ramirez. Can you hear me?
More than, yes, quite a bit.
Okay.
Pretty loud and some background noise.
Oh, okay. So sorry. Hold on one second. I apologize.
That's all right. You're at a ten and we need you about a six.
No problem.
You're good.
First, first off, my, thank you for spending the evening with us. It's finally, it's nice to finally see Jeanette. We've been emailing quite frequently during this process. My name is Samantha Ramirez. I am Cesar's Airbnb manager located at twenty eight oh one South Ninth Street, KCK six six one zero three. This would actually be our first home to, in KCK to manage as a STR. I've never managed an STR in KCK. So thank you for your patience during this process to both of us as the rules and regulations are very new to us. We've been trying very hard to follow this Coomburn, this process. It's been a very, you know, you, to read all the rules and regulations, you pretty much need a, a master's degree in urban planning and development, but we've been trying very, very hard. This is the first application for an STR on this street, so getting this application is approved. It's very important to us because what the other rules laid out in KCK's guidelines, you can't have, you know, the, the distance and whatnot. We, it is a three bedroom home. We plan to host up to six people. However, that's only when necessary. That won't be frequently. We plan to host to travel nurses and professionals and usually that's one or two persons at a time. We plan to keep the property manicured. We plan to keep it up to code. We will not be hosting parties. We plan to have no noise complaints. We plan to have all this in our house manual. We hope to host traveling families, travel employees and those who are here investing in KCK in some form or shape with their careers and their financials. Cesar and I both live very close to the property and when I say close, I mean within minutes. He lives right down the street. I live about three minutes away. So if there was ever an emergency, we would be there very quickly. To end my opening statement, Cesar is actually investing heavily in KCK and he plans to work closely with the city to ensure processes and requirements are being met. I do have some experience working in other, other neighborhoods, managing properties and short term rentals, just not in KCK. So that is basically all I have to say at this moment. And I do, I do have one question. If you can answer, I heard a comment earlier stating if denied, we're not allowed to appeal. Is that what I heard earlier or, because I know it's going to go to the board and zoning department after this as well, but if it happens to get denied, are we allowed to appeal and are we allowed to apply again?
So we'll, we'll, we'll refer you to staff depending on the outcome, but regardless of whether it's passed or denied tonight, it would go to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval.
Okay. And, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Anything else?
Oh, did you say that we could apply again if denied or appeal?
How about we handle this one and then we'll go from there?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Any questions for the, you bet. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ernst?
This is probably specifically for the applicant. In the past five years, there've been twenty some violations of sixteen, eighteen in the past year. But it doesn't set a really good track record for this being an Airbnb with people in.
I am. In a year.
Okay, hang on just one second. Say, sir, hang on just one second. Go ahead.
I think, I think he cut the gist of what I was asking.
Okay. Would Samantha or Caesar, would you want to comment on the violations?
Yeah, I just started working with, yes.
Let me, let me use.
Sure, go ahead.
This time. Yes, I, I, I assume totally responsibility for these violations. If you look at the violations, most of these violations were fined by, because I brought to my house, I bought a, a little shed to put it in the back of my house to storage my tools. When I moved to Kansas City, Kansas, when I was looking for houses, I choose specifically this corner because of the big lot it has. It's when I recently started my, my masonry business seven years ago. So I didn't know I will back then that I will need a special permit to store some of the equipment that I bought from my company through the years. The last year, the twenty twenty three, I guess, and twenty twenty four, before I left that property, is when I got the most violations, yes. It was mostly for the stuff I keep outside for my business. Thankfully, my business grow enough. And it grow a lot because I was able to keep all my equipment on my house and not paying rent somewhere else. But yes, all those violations were related to my business and construction. And I, 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 I bought that property to store as my, my stuff, knowing I may grow someday. But finally, with all my effort, I've been able to do it really well. And I bought a couple more properties and Southwest Boulevard and Mission Road where I have now the, the, my, my business and I don't have any more issues. So I know it's not related to this, but yes, I took fully responsibility on those previous violations before I decide, I mean, before I found the perfect place where I'm living now, like a couple blocks away. And, and I left the house and I didn't want to sell the house because I invest a lot of money on the house and I made the house like way too personal to rent it or even for Airbnb, I think it's, it's, it's even way too expensive for that, but I never thought I would move from that house. Otherwise, I will never invest the money I invest in the house. I put a lot of money and love into the house. So hopefully that's not something that eludes the way to deny the application for my Airbnb.
Well, I show, I, I think what Commissioner Ernst is getting at is it shows a failure to adhere to the rules and regulations set by the Unified Government. You have eighteen codes violations in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four alone. I have to tell you, that's more than any other property I've ever seen come across this desk. And I know you bought it to store your property, but that's not what you do with a residential property. You don't buy a residential property and store, store commercial equipment and commercial vehicles on it. So what establishes for me is a pattern of overlooking rules and regulations to do what you want to do versus what you're supposed to do.
Yes, and that was totally my ignorance because I always, I've been living around this area for over twenty years.
It's not ignorance when you're cited eighteen times, sir. It's, that's not ignorance. That's, that's, that's ignoring the codes is what it is. It's not ignorance because you were cited eighteen times.
Yes, yes.
It's not, actually, it wasn't a question. That was a statement. So I'm going to move on to Samantha Ramirez. She has her hand up, so I'm going to let her comment.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just, I'm aware of Cesar's violations and I'm hoping to be alleviate those issues which he's already paid those fines. And he does manage a construction company and to his fault, he didn't have an assistant and was very busy working, doing his masonry on commercial buildings. So we, I apologize on his behalf too, but I'm hoping now that I am here to help him. He also hired a personal assistant for his construction business. So I'm hoping we can all create this team where we work together with the city and that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Sorry if I stole any of your thunder, Commissioner Ernst.
Oh, no, sir.
All right. Seeing no other questions, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to, please come forward. Anyone online? Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Han to get his recommendations or comments.
Namus Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, again, this is a short term rental, special use permit, non owner occupied. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. As noted during the hearing, there are multiple notices of violation on the property. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, a maximum of six people on site, two cars off street and upgrading the currently gravel driveway to an improved surface.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Beth?
You have a question. That, there was some failures in inspections and things that needed to be completed or they, have they been done yet already or were they waiting for approval?
They would have to be, wouldn't they, Gunner? That's a, that'd be a condition of approval.
I didn't see them in the conditions of approval.
Oh, you did not. Excuse me.
But you would think they were, but I, I was looking at.
Just give me one second.
Under, under these.
All right, I got it. Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, I'll have to double check with staff if you wanted a direct answer, but typically we include conditions of approval for certain specific things that have not been met. And so as there are no conditions of approval, my assumption, and I don't have staff, this staff person with me right now who did this staff report, you could hold it over for me to confirm if you'd like.
No, that's, that's.
Or can it just be a condition of approval that we verify that it's done?
You could also add a condition of approval that all fix, all, all upgrades related to the inspection report be met within a certain amount of time, typically at six months.
And is that condition of the driveway, is, is that the entire driveway paved or just the apron?
No, it, it would require the entire driveway to be improved. No gravels allowed.
How long do they have to do that?
That's a six month says per ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Does that take care of it, Commissioner Beth?
Well, I couldn't find it in here right now, but I thought, I thought it said, said, said the apron and didn't mention the entire driveway, but that's, that's good enough for me. Thanks.
Says the driveway and apron must be paved with asphalt and or concrete. Condition number two.
Okay.
Other questions? For Director Han. If not, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Beth?
I move the Kansas City, Kansas Police, or Police. Commission recommend denial of special use SP twenty twenty four zero eight two because of the past code violations and the things that need to be done before it is in compliance with the ordinances.
All right. Motion made for denial by Commissioner Beth of special use application twenty twenty four dash zero eighty two based on the applicant's failure to comply with previous code enforcement violations and property condition, correct? All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, that mo, sorry. Commissioner Ernst?
Just a little show, slow, Jeff.
All right. So that is a second.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
No.
Ward?
Nope.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
No.
Mr. Chairman, that motion fails. Two in favor and three opposed.
All right. Thank you. Is there another motion? Commissioner Straws?
Since I voted no, I guess I have to make the yay motion. So I've moved to approve SP two zero two four dash zero eight two with staff stipulations and all compliances and improvements to the property to be done within six months for one year.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve special use application twenty twenty four dash zero eight two for one year, subject to the staff stipulations and all conditions of the repairs noted in the report to be completed along with the driveway and apron within six months. Is that correct, Commissioner Straws?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Want a clarification, Mr. Chair? Is that a new condition related to repairing, making all the repairs in the inspection report?
That's how I took it. Is that how you meant it, Commissioner Straws?
That is.
Understood. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
Nay.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I need a vote from you because it takes four to pass a motion.
If I vote nay, what does that do?
Uh, this motion will also fail. So in that case, the.
But I'm just wanting to know what my, what the options are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it would, it would fail and then we would need another motion.
Well, either a motion to hold over or it would move forward to the Board of Commissioners with no recommendation.
All right. My vote is nay.
Okay. That motion also fails. Okay, that motion also fails.
So that's how it will go on to the Board of Commissioners, correct?
And it's correct, it'll go forward with no recommendation.
All right, we'll let them sort it out.
Kind of like the ones that come back down there sometimes. Sorry, I said that out loud.
Bless you.
Known to have. All right, so this will be heard once again December fifth uh, at seven PM at the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three Blake, Blake Hibbler. Special use permit for the temporary use of land to keep shipping containers at the Home Field Baseball Complex at fifteen oh one North Ninetieth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November twelve, twenty twenty-four, the application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hibbler? Jody, I see your hand up in the audience online. Are you representing Mr. Hibbler?
Yes, I am.
Sorry?
Yes, I am representing Blake Hibbler.
All right, go ahead, give us your name, please, and address.
This is Jody Gill, uh, four four eight nine Southwest Bow Sprint Drive in Lee Summit, Missouri. I'm the regional superintendent for prep baseball tournaments. Um, and I am here on behalf of Blake Hibbler, our president. Uh, we are requesting an SUP to allow temporary use of containers. Uh, we are the long-term tenant of Home Field Baseball Park and thrilled to be in Kansas City, Kansas. Early in the construction of the park and prior to, to uh, becoming the, the tenants for the park, Home Field chose not to include a maintenance building in the project. Uh, we learned quickly that this would represent some or present some challenging, uh, some operating challenges for us. Uh, as a result, the decision was made to utilize several containers to support operations. Um, the containers include two forty-foot units to store transport and maintenance, golf-style carts, mowers and other facility maintenance equipment, uh, one forty-foot unit for storing sports equipment, one twenty-foot unit for cold storage and two twenty-foot units for apparel merchandising. The two merchandising containers are used only seasonally and relocated occasionally depending on the event. Our long-term plan is to construct a permanent building to replace most of the containers. We have completed a preliminary design, uh, which was reviewed by DRC last week. But the process to final design, financing and construction of this building will take some time. So as a result, we are requesting this two-year special use permit to continue use of the containers. We've painted all of the containers so they blend with the rest of the park as best as possible. It is our desire to make Home Field Baseball Park an outstanding tournament facility and a great asset for Kansas City, Kansas. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant's representative? Okay, I'm sorry, we've got one. Commissioner Ernst?
Containers three through seven, you have long-range plans for. One and two, you're going to use seasonably and then move them. How does that problem get solved within the next two years?
Well, the intent was that we hope that we can continue to use those containers because we have plans to shift them around to uh, different locations in the park occasionally or relocate to our other park, which is Creekside Baseball Park in, in Parkville for special events there as well.
Understood, that's what I assumed it was. Given that we frown on homeowners who try to use containers, I'm not sure you're a better representative of why they should be allowed. I'm done, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Richard Dapper, ninety-two fifty State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. The master plan developer on behalf of Home Field. The baseball complex in question is a thirty-five million dollar state-of-the-art baseball complex that thus far, every comment we've had from around the country is that it is the finest baseball complex in the entire country. We are very proud of what we've established there and very proud of our operating partner, PBR Tournaments. This baseball complex is absolutely slam-packed with families from modest state, baseball players from modest state, and we look forward to even a better season next year. We've heard no comments whatsoever from anybody about the containers. We do understand PBR's long-term plans to build a more permanent facility and rotate some of the containers in and out as needed. On a thirty-five million dollar project, over fifty acres, we would ask for your approval on this short-term basis and let PBR sort out how they need to operate these containers. And if they need something after the first two years, let them come back and plead their case to you. But in this interim period, we would certainly appreciate uh, you approving their two-year special use permit. And if you've not been by this facility, would really encourage everyone, both on the commission and in the audience and watching us on the internet, to please come by and see this spectacular facility and thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Plan resigned again. This is a temporary use special uh, special use permit for the storage containers on the facility. This is in the plan KCK area, midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, there are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval for two years max. Um, what that means is there is no renewal of this special use permit. If approved ultimately tonight and or by the Board of Commissioners, those storage containers would need to be either turned into permanent structures with building permits somewhere on the site or removed.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Straws?
I just wanted, I'm sorry, I need to go back to Gunner real quick to clarify. After the two years, even the ones that they're planning to maybe take back and forth to their two facilities, they would not be able to bring those back to this particular facility, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's two years.
Right, right. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve SP two zero two four dash zero eight three, I think that's the one we're on. Um, for two years, uh, with staff stipulations that after two years, all mobile containers are removed and not to return.
All right. Special use application twenty, a motion to approve special use application twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three for a period of two years, no renewals and all shipping containers must be removed at that time, made by Commissioner Straws. Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion? Thank you, Commissioner Ernst?
I resurrect his motion or get him to make it again, and I'll second it irregardless of how I'm going to vote.
Well, that motion died, so if there's going to need to be another motion, you're going to have to make it or Commissioner Straws is going to have to make another one.
I will make another motion that we approve SP two zero two four dash zero eight three. According to staff stipulations for a term of two years, after that term of two years, all mobile storage containers will be removed from the property and not to return.
Thank you. Uh, deja vu, motion to approve special use application twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three made by Commissioner Straws.
Mr. Chair, point of order, I defer to legal counsel. I don't think you can make this same motion twice if it does. I think Mr. Ernst had it right. He needs to resurrect the previous one if they want to move forward. I could be wrong, I, sorry.
If that motion never died for lack of a second, never made it to the floor.
Right.
Mike Farley with legal counsel, um, I'm gonna have to take a look at this for a second. See, um, I think the.
Commissioner Ernst, did you have a comment?
I'm more than glad to make the motion, even though I'll throw it out in the end, if that's what we need to do. I want it to move forward, I want the commissioners to deal with it and to move on with the.
It's my understanding if the motion never made it to the floor.
I don't want to get in the middle of this again. I think, I think I was wrong and you're right.
I'm gonna have to, I mean, at this point, I think, I think regardless of whether it was resurrected or there was a new motion, if we just have a different commissioner make the motion and agent legal fiction that at some point a motion for approval was made and seconded, I think that that would be sufficient.
Legal counsel would prefer that another commissioner make a motion, so Commissioner Straws, will you remove that motion? Or withdraw that motion?
At this time, I will withdraw my second motion, yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ernst, I see, no, I don't see your hand up, excuse me. I do see your hand up.
Sure, third time's the charm. I move that Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval grudgingly of SP twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three subject to all staff stipulations and the two-year limit on it.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval of special use application twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three for a period of two years made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second from you, Commissioner Straws?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Be grudgingly aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Nay.
Jesus. Muller?
No.
I, I need a point of clarification on Mr. Beth, did he vote aye? I couldn't.
Voted nay.
He voted nay, okay. All right, so this motion for approval fails, two in favor and three opposed.
I have three in favor and two oppose.
Well, I just have Straws and Ward in a favor and I have Beth, Ernst and Muller against.
Is that correct, everyone? Okay, so the motion to approve fails.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. What is your pleasure?
Well, in the spirit of Mr. Ernst, I will make a motion to deny uh, SP two zero two four dash zero eight three. Um, that is not conducive with the neighborhood and what we have done in the past with storage containers.
All right, motion made to deny special use application twenty twenty-four dash zero eight three made by Commissioner Straws for the reasons set forth by the maker of the motion. Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Commissioner Ernst?
I'd be hard-pressed to oppose that.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Discussion? Roll call.
Okay, the motion is for denial.
That's correct.
Straws?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this application for the reasons outlined by the maker passes, four in favor, one opposed.
All right, thank you. This will be heard once again on December fifth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that takes us on to our next special use permit. SP twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five Eric Medina. Special use permit for used automobile, automobile sales at forty-nine South Seventh Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November twelve, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Medina, are you in the audience? Go ahead and give me your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Sure. My name is Eric, Eric Medina and the address is forty-nine South Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero one. I am thirty-seven years old and English is my second language. I am educated like entrepreneur who is always seeking opportunities for personal grow. I like to learn how to grow my skills and my business. I have been in, I have been working in the car industry since I was twenty-four years old. I have years of experience of car dealerships. Brother Auto Sales is my business in Kansas City, Missouri, and I will be honored to have a business license for the second location in Kansas. Our first Brother Auto Sales location opened in twenty eighteen and has been successful. Brother Auto Sales is different from another private dealerships because of, of excellent customer service and quality cars. When I found this opportunity in this location in Kansas, I know it can be successful business because it will be a good traffic, accessible and affordable. Our business desired to sell cars to allow transportation for students to get to school and the workers to their respective workplaces. Brother Auto Sales will conduct business by selling cars only. This location does not plan to do anything like car repairs in this location. All the reconditioning cars, it will be on the first location in Kansas City, Missouri. We will provide far parking, five parking spot for customers and employees parking in the property. We will have the fifteen cars available for purchases. Brother Auto Sales at this location will have two employees. Brother Auto Sales will keep the business property clean, working condition. This is very important for us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak in favor of this case or in opposition, please come forward or raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one in the audience or online, we will go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Plan resigned again. This is a special use permit for used auto sales. This is in the central area plan, right off the Seventh Street corridor. Staff received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. There are some older notices of violation as the property has been vacant for quite some time, which would be addressed by the proposed project. Staff recommends approval for two years with conditions mainly following the ordinance-required uh, standards for this type of use, commercial design guidelines and uh, some enhanced screening and landscaping to buffer from the adjacent residentially zoned properties.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? If not, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Ernst?
I'm ready to quit, but I move that Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five in no small part due to the quality of his presentation.
Thank you. Motion made for approval of special use application twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second, Commissioner Straws?
It is.
All right, nothing against you two, but I'll be glad when Vice Chair Jones comes back.
Me too, you know what?
I'm teasing you both. Okay, motion made for approval of this application. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024-085 for two years passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This is going to be heard once again on December 5th before the Board of Commissioners. One more time, December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Okay? Good luck.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2024-091. David Dickey with Dickey LLC. Special use permit for short-term rental at 4516 Eaton Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yeah. Hello, my name is David Dickey. I'm at 4516 Eaton Street, Kansas City, Kansas, uh, 66103. So I am looking to turn this into a short-term rental. Um, I'm looking to attract only business professionals. Um, the property is located very closely next to KU Med, other hospitals. So I'm going to be looking to attract like travel nurses, uh, business contractors as well. Um, just want to be very clear that I'm wanting to do everything I'm supposed to. Don't want to break any rules and regulations. Um, I haven't kind of like. But any laws, taxes, anything that, um, I need to know about, do, just let me know and they will be followed by 100%.
You seem rather difficult to work with. I'm kidding you. I don't want to throw you, I don't throw off your mojo.
Um, like I said, yeah, I'm just trying to have at most maybe five, six guests as a family. Um, it is a five-bedroom, two-bath hot property. I'm looking, like I said, I want to keep it to mostly nurses, engineers, um, people that have to travel for work. A lot of times those, um, contractors will also book it out for longer stays, maybe like a month or two. Um, I'll have numerous, um, security measures in place on the property to ensure, um, I will have an absolute zero policy on parties. Anything like that, I will have a noise monitor, um, detector in the unit that will measure the decimal levels. Um, then that will immediately alert me if levels get too high. This, uh, this, this gadget's also pretty cool too. It's going to tell me how many people are connected to the wifi. I will also have security cameras on the front and back. Um, I will be very, I guess, when I'm looking at bookings, um, if I have, if I get guests that have a history of bad bookings or don't have much history at all, I will have no hesitant, um, rejecting them. I'm also working with, very closely with a, um, real estate investor who's heavily involved in the short-term rental, um, industry. And he's kind of going to be holding my hand, making sure I do everything with compliance with city, state, um, and all of, you know, everything else I need to be doing correctly there. Um, so he's going to kind of be a good resource for me just to reach out to in case, um, I do need, you know, help with anything. Also, um, I own another, a second piece of property. And I, it's about 10 minutes from the property. So if need be, I can be over in 10, 15 minutes. I am local in Kansas City as well. So, um, there won't be any delay. If any emergency or anything I need to get over there, I'll be right over. Um, trying to think what else. I've already spoken with, uh, next door neighbor. Um, he's actually a contractor that's going to help me, um, get a fence built. He seems very friendly. Gave him my number, contact information, let him know, um, if anything is weird or suspicious, just give me a shout, give me a holler. I'll be over there. Um, really all I got, like I said, um, you're gonna have lots of cameras, noise monitors in, in place. Um, and again, I'm also looking, like I said, nurses, business, business professionals are going to be kind of my target audience as there is a hospital pretty close by. So I thought that would be a good investment for myself. Um, to have a hospital nearby and have a property that could potentially attract those, those people.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Come on, I think we should grill him. Well, all right, all right. I'm not getting any takers. Uh, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come forward. Okay? Go ahead and have a seat, Mr. Dickey and. Yes, sir. Your name and address.
My name is Jacob Hotson. I am the president of the Spring Valley Neighborhood Association. I reside at 4448 Francis Street in KCK. I'm here on behalf of the neighbors who surround this property. I was notified today that none of them received the neighborhood notice as per the section of the code for the neighborhood meeting prior to this application. I will say that I did receive that notice in the mail.
You did?
Yes, I did. But out of the 58 other people on the contact list, I appear to have been the only one. Unfortunately, I was not able to make the meeting because it was on a Friday night during high school football and I was at my son's football game. So I'd ask in this that you create a condition for another, another neighborhood meeting to be held prior to this going to the full Board of Commissioners. And that is my only request. I will leave the rest up to you. Any questions, I'd be happy to take.
All right. Thank you. We'll look into your, your concern. Anyone else? I've got one person online, Sierra. Sierra, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Sierra Cortano, 4511 Eaton Street. The only question I had is in regards to parking, especially if there's going to be four or five people because I know that, um, that driveway is relatively short. So are there going to be cars or is there a limit on parking for that?
All right. We'll get you an answer to that. Do you have anything else you'd like to know?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else want to speak to this case? Okay. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to have you go ahead and come on back.
Yeah, I forgot to mention.
Can you speak to the number of cars or that you've got?
So, um, there won't be any parking on the street. There's a pretty long driveway. And so I'll make sure my guests know, like, no parking on the street. It can fit probably three to four cars. I shouldn't have many more than that to begin with. Um, and in terms of the letters, I know I sent all of them out. I don't know if they got lost. Um, I had 52 of them sent out and I had a couple of people help on the neighborhood meeting. But I, I know I sent all of them out. So I'm not sure what, what happened there.
And the number was 52 and that list was provided to you by staff?
Yeah, yeah. I got all the letters and everything and I, my neighborhood meeting, I believe, was on the 18th at 6:30. I had everything sent out two weeks before.
All right. Thank you. All right. Go ahead and have a seat. We'll now go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director Plannin resign. Again, this is a short-term rental, special use permit, non-owner occupied. This isn't, oh, excuse me. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Before this meeting, staff received no letters of support. We did get a flurry of emails the day and some, uh, some in opposition. There are no notices of violation for this property. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, a maximum of seven people on site, three cars off street.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Strauss?
I move that we approve SP 2024-091 according to staff stipulations and comments.
Set for a period of one year with seven, no more than seven people and three cars?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve special use application 2024-091 made by Commissioner Strauss. Second. According to staff stipulations and comments, and that was seconded by Commissioner Ward here in the chambers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024-091 for one year, subject to the conditions and the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
This will be heard once again on December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. All right? You can see staff for any other directions. Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2024-092. Katrina Bedowski. Special use permit for a short-term rental at 2918 West 46th Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bedowski? Are we, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Like, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Katrina Bedowski and I am homeowner and resident at 2918 West 46th Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66103. My proposal is for a short use, uh, a special use permit for a short-term rental to host guests while I'm away on business or personal travel. I have a passion for hosting and I am interested in creating an exceptional experience for our visitors to Wyandotte County. I personally have lived out of short-term rentals for a period of 12 months while I traveled the world, um, the country, uh, working remote. This is my primary residence, so I will be maintaining it as it is my own. I will be advertising the property, securing tenants and preparing the home for guests. It will be advertised as a single-family furnished home with all utilities included. I look forward to the opportunity to be an exceptional neighbor, an exceptional host to visitors and highlight to guests all that KCK and the surrounding area has to offer. Since moving in, I have done some light interior and exterior upgrades to the home to increase curb appeal as well as create a modern comfort experience. I have been doing my best to educate myself on code regulations for special use permit and getting the property compliant to code. I did bring my guest handbook with me today to review some things I have already added to it. The house rules are as follows. No parties, no events, no glitter. No smoking, vaping, e-cigarettes or illegal substances. No street or lawn parking. Maximum of seven guests allowed, maximum of two pets allowed. Maximum three vehicles in the driveway allowed. The United Government enforces this policy. Contact information for host compliance is provided. I have presented an evacuation diagram that will go at the entrance of the home. And I've included information on what to do in the event of a natural disaster, power outage or other emergency. I've included utility contact information and code information for keeping pets in a home. Lastly, in the guest manual, I have the EPA-led disclosure pamphlet. And I am open to any of the questions you have for me at this time.
Hey, thank you. Well, since, uh, Commissioner Ward and myself have a passion for glitter, uh, we're concerned about your, your no glitter policy.
I can refer you to another Airbnb, but you cannot stay in mine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, that's a first though. That, that tickled me. I wasn't laughing at you, but that glitter tickled me.
You tried cleaning glitter out of a carpet.
Not in a long time. I can't say, well, no, Patty, my wife would have done that if we had a glitter incident, but, but, uh, I just, thank you for tickling me this late in the evening.
Sure.
Um, any further questions for this applicant who has also been very difficult with me this evening? All right. Seeing now, we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Seeing no one in the chambers or online, we'll go to Director Hand to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director Plannin resign. Again, this is a short-term rental, special use permit. It is owner, owner occupied, but because the owner will not be there during rentals, it does not meet the threshold for an administrative short-term rental as per the unified government's ordinance. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff received no letters of support. Excuse me, no letters in opposition. There are also older notices of violation which have all been closed. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, maximum of seven people on site, three cars off street. We do ask that, uh, they repave the driveway and remove all gravel from the property. There's a little bit you can kind of see even in this aerial. A lot of people put gravel on, in the public right of way so they can parallel park. Um, again, we're asking that that be repaired and removed accordingly.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Uh, Commissioner Ernst?
I think she did a great job, Commissioner Hand. Can you maybe work that glitter into a policy somewhere?
I didn't want anybody else to say it because I still have the giggles and I was, I was going to try to get through the rest of this without doing that. So. So you're out of order, Commissioner Ernst. Okay. Seeing none, I will, uh, stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Strauss?
I move that we approve SP 2024-092 for one year with a maximum of seven people, three cars and no glitter.
Thank you. Uh, motion for approval of special use application 2024-092, uh, with staff stipulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mueller?
I've been trying to figure out how to get glitter into this, but I can't. I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 92 for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, December 5th at 7:00 PM and we'd like to have you come back anytime you want to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2024-093. Carissa Hallman. Special use permit for a short-term rental at 7146 Parallel Parkway. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Ms. Hallman, I have you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and start off with your name and address.
Hi, my name is Carissa Hallman. My address is 15953 South Crestview Drive in Olafah, Kansas 66062. And my plan for this property, I plan to manage it myself. I live within 40 minutes of the property. Um, I plan to be very proactive with my management by screening guests. I'll be marketing to families and business professionals coming to the area. Um, and I also will be using exterior cameras to make sure there's no more than seven people and three cars at the property at any time. And I also have the device that measures noise in decibels that lets me know if things are getting too loud. Um, all of the neighbors have already been provided all of my contact information. Um, yeah, any questions for me, I guess?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any questions of this applicant? We're not seeing any, so we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak on this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand if you're in, online and come to the microphone if you're here. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand. Director Plannin resign. Again, this is another short-term rental, special use permit, non-owner occupied. This one's in the plant KCK area in the midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There's some older notices of violation, all which have been closed. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, a maximum of seven people off, uh, on site, three cars off street. There's also a condition in there that we will not post the publication if it is recommended or if it is approved by the Board of Commissioners. Until we have proof of liability insurance.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Anyone?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit 2024-093, search staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Ward to approve special use application 2024-093 for a period of one year with seven people and three cars. Is there a second? Commissioner Straws, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024-093 for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is SP 2024-094, Tamara McConnell. Special use permit for a drinking establishment with events at 2724 North 13th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a letter that was received in the mail today that I would like to read into the record.
Okay.
Um, and it, this is an anonymous, anonymous letter, I'm sorry. This letter is in reference to the special use permit at 2724 North 13th. I oppose the granting of this permit. This location has proven that it is a nuisance to the neighborhood. Some in the area are afraid to openly oppose because of a fear of retaliation. They are very violent. In Missouri, when there is such a place, the city shut them down. Why is Kansas different?
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you want me to do.
Good evening, Tamara McConnell, 2724 North 13th Street. My proposal is to continue as a sports bar and grill in Wyandotte County on 13th and Quandero with the support of my neighbors to the north of me, the Northeast Development Corporation, along with Robert Mylan and, um, all the board members of that project. We currently host, um, entertainment for Sports Bar and Grill. Um, we serve American style cuisine, hamburgers, chicken wings, fries, et cetera, along with cocktails, beer and wine. Um, to add to our outside and inside, we've done a tremendous amount of renovations to the space, adding lighting to the outside, additional security off duty and then as well as removing tables, cans for smoking um, from the front of the building from, uh, prevent, to prevent laundering or possible, uh, vague grant. So we ask that the petition, we, we propose that we continue to do business as a sports bar and grill, attracting Kansas City's sports fans as well as our community. We are family friendly, open from 4:30 PM to 1:00 AM um, with service of dinner from the hours of 4:30 to 10:00 PM. So we propose, our proposal is that we continue to do business as a sports bar and grill um, on the corner of 13th and Quandero.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
Um, Ms. McConnell, you mentioned, uh, security, uh, match facility. I just, uh, from the letter that came out, it's anonymous, obviously, we don't know who to ask that, any of those questions to. Um, who do you use for your off duty security and, uh, do you use Kansas City Police or do you use Sheriff's Department or?
Yes, so we have in the past had off duty Kansas City, Kansas officers along with private security companies, um, that we have contracted from outside.
And, um, to your knowledge, um, following up on that letter, is, uh, are there any incidents that you can think of that would have, um, prompted somebody to, to put a letter up like that against you guys?
So we can only say that we have had to ourselves address issues um, in the community that are happening, um, there on that corner. We can only control what is going on inside our business and that is what we have done. We don't have any incidents that to date have taken place inside the business. The things that I think are being, uh, maybe brought up against us are those things that are happening in that community. They're not affecting the business inside of our bar nor our patrons that come, um, to, uh, support us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, I just have one question. How long have you been operating the, the establishment?
So I, um, leased the property and have been for the past, uh, two years.
Two years, okay.
Yes.
I was just looking at some of these codes violations and so improper boarding of building, you know what that was about?
I do not.
That happened in 2022, did?
Uh, it, if that was, I do have the owner of the building that may can speak to that, but I'm not aware of any improper boarding.
Okay, and then what about a deck being built?
Yes, we were, um, in the process of trying to put some outdoor seating. Uh, we did receive the stop build and remove that until we can go forward with the proper plans to build a.
So you got the permits and everything was taken care of then?
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand if you're online, come to the mic if you're here in the chamber. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning. Again, this is for a drinking establishment, live entertainment and events. Um, again, the definition in our code between a drinking establishment and a restaurant is just a matter of how much, uh, revenue goes, comes from alcohol versus non-alcohol. So, um, it was described as a sports bar, but just so you guys understand, the special use permit, which previously had also been a private club, uh, basically continues. It was noticed as all of those things, so all of those things are a part of this special use permit. This is in the Northeast Area Plan, uh, right south of Quandero Boulevard on 13th Street by a parcel. Uh, staff received no letters in support, no letters in opposition until the one that was read into the record that we received, uh, today. There are some older notices of violation, again, which are being addressed, uh, as mentioned in the questions. Staff recommends approval for two years with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit 2024-094, subject to staff stipulation and comments for a period of two years.
Thank you. Motion to approve special use application 2024-094 made by Commissioner Ward for a period of two years, subject to staff stipulations. Is that a second? Commissioner Straws?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024-094 for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This is going to be heard one more time, December 5th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is Platte 2024-032, Steve Sobek. Preliminary Platte Stony Point Meadows for 127 single family lots at 912 North 86th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I guess I would, I mean, I visited the subdivisions of the builder, so that would be the only contact. Okay, you are not Mr. Sobek, correct? But are you presenting on behalf of Mr. Sobek?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I do see him online as well.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Your name and address.
Alex Elliott, I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, based in Kansas. Um, here before you is a single family subdivision, um, on a R1 zone piece of property, um, in KCK. Um, we are sticking to all of the, um, zoning requirements and, uh, master plan requirements for this, uh, development, not asking for anything, um, out of the ordinary and, uh, just trying to do it by the book on this one, uh, as it were. Um, I would like to draw attention to, um, some of the, uh, conditions of staff approval, um, specifically, uh, numbers six, eight and 10. Um, I'll just read through this and we can have some discussion if we need. We would like to modify condition six and eight in relation to each other. Condition six states per the Go Dot Strategic Mobility Plan, install a 10-foot sidewalk on the west side of North 86th Street from the north property line, south to the perpendicular to the north Stony Point Park property line and install a crosswalk with Hawk signalization at the across North 86th Street, similar to the crosswalk between Compass Minerals Soccer Complex and Home Field Perfect Game Baseball Complex on North 90th Street and south to the driveway entrance into Stony Point Park, end quote. We had previous discussion with staff on this Go Dot sidewalk along 86th Street. Um, felt that we were on the same page, um, uh, but the, the comment now, basically originally, um, we had made this proposal to extend the sidewalk down to Stony Point, um, to kind of include that as almost like an amenity in our subdivision, right? We're connecting into it, people from our subdivision can walk down there. Um, and then basically staff made the suggestion, which is, um, condition eight, which states there is existing right of way that is not being used along the north property line, which has a direct connection to the State Avenue bus loop. Consider vacating the excess right of way and use as an ingress, egress point or possibly a trail connecting, connection to the bus loop stop as one of your required amenities. And basically, we felt that that was a, um, much better opportunity, um, to basically flip those things. Instead of taking the sidewalk south to Stony Point, we're taking the sidewalk north to State Avenue to connect into that sidewalk network, very large sidewalk net, sidewalk network. One of the main reasons why we want to do that is, um, we kind of had a lack of foresight with our proposal to connect to Stony Point in that there is a lack of right of way. That existing road is platted at, um, 40 feet of right of way. Um, it's set aside as, I believe, a residential collector, which is, should be a 60-foot right of way. Along our property's front, we're setting aside an additional 20 feet, so we're actually setting aside what could be 80 foot of right of way, 40 on one side. Um, the reason we set aside an extra 20 feet instead of just 10 is because of that 10-foot trail. It takes up a lot of space. It's a very large, um, sidewalk. And with the ditch that exists there, power poles, things like that, um, we just felt it couldn't fit in a 10-foot. Um, basically that problem extends south. If we're going to, um, extend our sidewalk south of our property line to the north line of Stony Point Park, there's just not room to do that. Measured on our survey between the existing right of way and the edge of pavement as it exists is 10 or less feet. Um, and to get a 10-foot sidewalk plus curb, plus, you know, some gap there, I mean, obviously it just can't fit. So, we're flipping it, going north instead of south, um, using the right of way that exists to the north side of our site, um, and setting aside a tract on our property to put the trail north instead of south. That's basically what we're, um, wanting to do. Um, the other modification we would like to make to this condition, that being condition six, is regarding the Hawk Signalized Crosswalk. Um, we would like the need for this to be dependent on the traffic study's findings. Plain and simple, we don't want to put it in if it's not needed. Our traffic engineer has already been in communication with Chris Finger with Public Works to determine the scope of this traffic study and so they're on the same page as to what, um, Public Works is wanting for this development. Um, we would like condition six to be modified to read, quote, "Per the Go Dot Strategic Mobility Plan, install a 10-foot sidewalk on the west side of North 86th Street from the north project property line, south to perpendicular to the south project property line and install a crosswalk with Hawk signalization at the North 86th and Barnett Avenue intersection if the tratics, traffic study deems it necessary," end quote. Onto condition 10, um, we would like to remove this condition entirely. Uh, due to lack of space between the back of the lots and 86th Street, adding both the 10-foot sidewalk and buffering will take away too much space, decreasing lot size and limiting the flexibility of use for the homeowner. Also, buffering is not required by the unified, unified development ordinance between single family zone properties, which is what is to the east of us. That's all I have.
That's a lot, especially when we get into those easements. Um, okay. Questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand. Or come to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his recommendations and we'll get back to you on, because I think it's going to help to see the map. So we'll go to Director Hand.
Just a second, Mr. Chair.
What was the first condition you were talking about?
Condition number six.
Six, ten.
Six, eight and 10.
Six, eight and 10.
Yeah, basically eight is a suggestion. We just want to make, make it clear that we will be doing that.
Can I ask a question of the applicant real quick? Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Uh, so just so, just so I'm clear, a lot of stuff going on on that, trying to unwrap that now. So you, instead of going south all the way down to your property line, you want to go, you want, you want to take it north to the bus stop basically at 86 and State?
We, we are still extending the sidewalk all the way along our property.
Okay.
It's just from our property down to where the park is.
Mm-hmm.
We want to not do that.
Okay.
Because of the space issues.
But you want, but you said something about going down to Isabel or Barnett, correct?
That's our southern intersection, yes.
Okay, so you would, you would take a, so there, there would be a sidewalk along your property line down to Barnett and then would a cross, you, you want to cross it over at Barnett? Is that what you're wanting to do?
We will, we will have a crosswalk there, yes.
Rather than going all the way down to the park, right?
Correct.
And then on the north side, where does it stop?
So on the north side, there is a, there's like a bus turnaround on State Avenue.
Yes.
And there is right of way set aside through there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not being used currently. We, we would like to put our 10-foot trail through there, through a tract in our property, down to our right of way that we're setting aside in the new property to connect into our internal sidewalk network.
Are you talking about the, the bus turning around there to the west of 86 and State?
Yes.
So, so a, a trail that goes from behind your, your property line on the north, north and west side through that, that piece of property all the way to State Avenue?
Correct.
Okay, not down 86th Street?
Correct.
Okay, got you.
Better handled than I think that I do. All right, thank you. Gunner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning. Again, this is a plat for 127 single family. This is in the Platte, KCK area in the midtown neighborhood. Uh, you all might remember this property, a few months ago, we had a special use permit for a different facility at this location. At that meeting, I believe the comment was, you should just develop it as a single family subdivision. Here we are. Um, staff received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval with conditions and I'll get to those comments here in a second. It does require a final plat. We do have a lot of it to talk about in terms of sidewalks and that final plat should include, um, covenants and restrictions, um, accordingly. I'll just go straight to conditions here. So we can look at them as we talk. All right, so the discussion with the applicant was this subdivision requires a large amenity. We were going to accept the connection to the park as their amenity. If we don't connect to the park, there's no amenity. So we would recommend not changing condition number six. So we would recommend not changing condition number six. What we had originally asked for was to extend the sidewalk the entire length of 86 north to State, so it would have gone north of their property line to connect to State. This was not an either-or conversation between connecting to the park and not connecting to the park. This was an either-or conversation about, do we go up to State Avenue via 86th Street or via this weird kind of right-of-way that was left over from, we're not 100% sure where. But they own it and it connects to State, so we agree that a 10-foot trail from State Avenue to the middle of the proposed project, connecting to their internal sidewalk and then eventually over to 86th Street in some way, shape or form is acceptable. We still would, because 86th Street is a priority sidewalk in the countywide mobility strategy and before it, the Sidewalk and Trails Master Plan, it still requires a sidewalk the length of the property on 86th Street. So if we don't connect to the park, which we think is a great amenity, then this would have to come back with some other amenity, large amenity, because it meets that threshold. So we would recommend no changes to condition number six other than only do a Hawk signal if it's warranted. So we could amend it to see if the traffic study says it's a Hawk signal. If it's some other sort of crossing, then so be it. I don't think we have to tie them necessarily to Hawk, especially if it ends up not being warranted as per their studies and our traffic engineer's review. As it relates to condition number eight, again, I think this was being tied to number six, so I think this can stay because we still want to connect up to State Avenue. And then as it relates to number 10, there's an elevation change. The road is higher than the subdivision, so we were trying to create a buffer and screening for those parcels who would basically have a road above their backyards. I guess we would defer to you whether you think that's a wise condition or not, number 10 specifically. I think if you wanted to cut down the amount of sidewalk, because I will grant that it's quite a lot of linear feet to get all the way down to Stony Park, but that was the conversation that we thought we were having the entire time, that we were going to use that as an amenity if they were willing to connect to it, building a sidewalk that we've been trying to build on 86th Street to connect Stony Park to State Avenue in some way, shape or form. For decades, we've been waiting for this opportunity, I think. So I think the, if it's the commission's prerogative to reduce the amount of linear feet, I think what we could do is, let me look at the, pinch a better picture here.
Well, is this a candidate for holdover to see if we can get this worked out rather than, I don't like these, trying to re-engineer a project, not having something in front of us and...
Sure, and I think, and I agree, but I...
I think Commissioner Ward's got a better handle on it than I do at this moment.
Well, let me just, let me just offer this last point so we can get your direction as you see fit. If the only street that connects is this one to Barnett, I think that we could probably get rid of the sidewalk along their eastern property line, the west side of 86th Street, but still have that connection across Barnett and down to Stony Park, Stony Point Park. So they wouldn't have to build, if you wanted to get rid of a sidewalk, it would be staff's recommendation to get rid of the section along 86, so that essentially you'd come down State Avenue, through the internal circulation, cross Barnett and go all the way down to Stony Park. I think that was our original intent. Whether we captured that or not, or whether it was confusing with the applicant, we apologize, but I think that was the original intent. I think we can correct it now if you want, but if you prefer us to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, a holdover for 30 days would suffice.
Yeah, good question. Go ahead, Commissioner Ward, and then I'll go to Commissioner Straws.
Okay, so going back to the amenity, is what you're proposing count as the amenity? Or if it doesn't, then they have to come up with, they now have to come up with amenity for the housing condition, correct?
That's correct.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The requirement for 127 is one large, one small. So we were taking the connection to the park as one amenity, large, and then the rest of the trail network as...
Second.
The second.
So we don't have that now if we don't, if we don't connect down to the park, right? Is that what you're saying?
We don't have.
We don't have an amenity if it just goes across the street to Barnett, right?
Correct. That's just a crossing of a street.
I really think this is a candidate for a holdover to get this more worked out, because if not, then they've got to come up with an amenity for their housing.
Let's go to Commissioner Straws. Maybe he's got some words of wisdom. Commissioner Straws?
He's right in my wheelhouse right there, because I wanted to go back actually to the lawyer and the developer to make sure that was their understanding. And I don't think that if that was their understanding, they wouldn't mind building a sidewalk to that park instead of building two amenities. So I believe this isn't, like, I agree, it's a prime candidate for holdover so that we can make sure that all, everybody's talking the same language, because that seems like a concession that we're making from an amenity perspective that we don't normally make. We normally make you build the amenity inside the property. And so if we're making that concession just to a sidewalk, then I think maybe they would build that sidewalk, but they need to get that, maybe there was something lost in translation somewhere.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions for Director Hand? I'm going to let Mr. Sobek speak, because I haven't heard from him. Let's see if he's got anything that would clarify.
Thank you so much for your time. We're fine with the suggestion of Mr. Hand of connecting from State Avenue down to the park. That's, that's fine with us. It sounds like that would satisfy all the requirements that the planning department and everyone would be looking for, so we're good with that.
You're good with that, Gunner?
The original conditions? Yeah, I'm good with that.
Commissioner Ward? So are we talking the connection from the bus turning around on 86th? I'm sorry, on State, all the way through the property? And then, and then once they get to the property line, the sidewalk still goes all the way down to the very end of the property line to the, to the south? Is that what we're talking about? And connected to the park?
As I understood it, it would still cross at Barnett and then go south on the east side of 86th.
That they would be responsible for?
Correct.
Instead of building on their side, they would build it on the east side of 86th?
So, Mr. Sobek, we're going to the original staff recommendations and you're okay with that, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
So, and one point of clarification, I apologize, I did misspeak earlier. So there is a playground on one of the open space tracks. That's the small requirement. Again, we're calling all the trails and sidewalk stuff
The large amenity.
Outside of the core project as the large, to get us to the park.
All right.
But we would amend eight to make the Hawk conditional on a warrant. And I think we still need your guidance on 10 regarding the extra buffering.
Well, the, so the, if I, if I heard right, it sounded like we're going to forget the sidewalk along there and then use the buffering instead. Is, if I heard that correct?
We'd be willing to correct, so
Okay.
If linear feet, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign, sorry. If linear feet was the issue with the commission, I think we could forego the 86th Street sidewalk along the proper, the project's proposed boundary and instead just do the crossing and down. And if we remove the sidewalk on the west side of 86, which is the east side of the property, so like right here, there should be room for buffering, which means we could keep that. Condition as is.
Yep, that sounds, sounds good in there.
All right.
All right, so if you guys can muddle through a a motion, excuse me, thank you. Staff can hash it out.
All right.
You want to go to the conditions themselves?
Commissioner Straws, do you have a comment?
No, I think I'm ready to take staff at it.
Well, okay, well, as I said, Commissioner Ward was going to, but if you're ready.
No, Ward's got it. Go ahead, Doc. I'll second it.
You got to make a motion first. All right, we're going to go to Commissioner Ward.
Here's your word. I move to approve. I got to get the correct one here.
Plat 2024-032.
There you go. This one, Jesus. Okay, yeah, I move to approve plat 2024-0 through to 032. So on number, on condition of approval number six, the sidewalk will now cross over on the easternmost boundary over to Barnett and then go down to the park, instead of going down the length of the property line.
Correct, and the Hawk light will be determined based on a warrant.
And that's on number, that's on number eight, correct?
No, that's all six.
It's all six, okay. And then...
Eight stays?
Eight does stay.
And stays.
And then 10 stays.
Our modification is to six.
Online cases, yeah, there we go.
All right, so motion to approve special use application, or excuse me, plat 2024-032 made by Commissioner Ward, subject to staff stipulations and revised condition number six as stated and that Janet has captured in the minutes. Is there a second? Commissioner Straws?
There is, but I'd like to do a, I don't know, I can't do an addition to his motion because that, we didn't talk about the removal of the sidewalk on the other side, did we, in that motion?
That was our, that was in it.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, well, I second it then.
All right, all right. Moved and seconded to approve plat 2024-032, subject to all staff stipulations and the modified number six condition stated by Commissioner Ward in the motion captured by the secretary. All right, and a second by Commissioner Straws. Any discussion? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, God bless Mr. Sobek for jumping in there and moving us along.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Bye.
Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat 2024-032, subject to the conditions in the staff report, along with the modification to condition number six, passes. Five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will not be heard. We're good, thank you.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go to our last two applications on the agenda tonight, and they will be heard together. Plat 2024-033, Mark Hendridge with Continental Consulting Engineers, preliminary plat for one commercial lot at 1709 North 98th Street and plan review application, PR 2024-032, preliminary development plan for a new hotel at 1709 North 98th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 12, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Do any of the members of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Name and address.
Richard Napper, on behalf of Home Field, 9250 State Avenue. Good late evening to everyone here.
This is early for us.
Of everything that I've brought before you the past two-plus years, three years with Home Field, I think this might be, I'm hopeful, the quickest and easiest of anything we've looked at. When you look at the Home Field Showcase Center, huge building, baseball, huge facility, Margaritaville Resort, mega resort, the Atlas Nine Museum, Camping World, and the list goes on and on. Every one of those projects had something very unique about the design, very unique about it. And with the help of staff and the help of this planning commission and ultimately the Board of County Commissioners, everything has been approved. And those facilities are all either open for business and doing very well or still under construction. So tonight, as I have in other nights, when, whether it's our own project or a partner project, I failed to say, I think I was here a few weeks ago in front of you for Topgolf, which, again, a fantastic addition to our community. Tonight, we have another addition, and this is a Hilton-flagged hotel. The gentlemen behind me are going to dive into the detail, but I wanted to make the opening remarks similar as I had with Topgolf. We realize at Home Field that not every patron of Home Field or patron in this community or the state of Kansas is going to want to stay at a Margaritaville Resort. It's big and it's expensive, and we hope everyone does, but that's not realistic. There needs to be another option for families and others coming to this area and at Home Field, and we want them to be, have the options at the Home Field Master Plan. This is a flagged hotel, Hilton, so a great, if you travel a lot and you have points in the reservation system, it is a lower-priced point than the Margaritaville, but keep in mind the Margaritaville is $300 to $400 a night. That is a Class A full-service resort. This is a brand-new, latest prototype, fantastic Hilton-flagged hotel. So we are very pleased that it will be on property and offer all of our patrons and visitors yet another option and amenity for this $800 million Starbond District. I think I would just preview two things for you that the gentleman in the back of me and along with staff can dive into. And I think you've heard this from me before. When you position or orient a building on a site, whether it is a hotel, it is an office, it is retail, a medical office, it is important for the front door and the parking to be visible and accessible. If you're pulling into this hotel at night, and as I'm sure we all have, you look for the front door of the hotel and you want to park as close to it as you can. It's a safety factor, and from an operational standpoint, it's vital to the hotel. There is no comment, to my knowledge, or no issues with the aesthetics on this hotel. They're in complete agreement with staff. We just want to make sure this hotel is sited in an optimum position for the long-term success of this hotel. These gentlemen are investing $20 million to build the hotel, and that does not count the money to operate the hotel after it's open. So again, I don't think there's a huge debate on this, and we're not talking about A to Z. These are very narrow differences, but where they've asked the hotel to be sited, in their opinion and in our opinion, is vital for the success of this hotel. Secondly, which they'll dive into, is there is a stipulation about a sidewalk on the south side of the property that runs east-west from 98th up to the entrance to US Soccer, the National Training Center. The sidewalk, then, it dead-ends. We've heard of a bridge to nowhere. Well, this is a sidewalk to nowhere. It dead-ends into a grass berm. There are not sidewalks inside the National Training Center. There are no sidewalks that lead from National Training down Pinnacle Way and would connect with this lot. To make sure I was accurate and correct, I went to the site, and I'm there all the time, but I could have forgotten something. I went by there tonight before I came here. There are no sidewalks inside of the US Soccer Facility. These gentlemen would be building a sidewalk that dead-ends into a grass berm. I have the pictures in the darkness on my phone from tonight, so they'll dive into it in detail. They have a very easy aerial site plan that shows this. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to the Hilton Hotel developer, Blake, and to his civil engineer, Mark, and let them go into more detail with you on this fantastic $20 million facility.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Evening, guys. Blake Hyman, 322 South Mosley, Wichita, Kansas. I'm the Vice President of Development with TGC Group. We're an owner and operator based in Wichita, Kansas. We operate 25 hotels across 16 states, but headquartered a couple hours south of here in Wichita. This is, as you mentioned, the Hilton Home Two Suites is the proposed brand here. I'll keep the rest of it short and sweet, but totally fine with everything on the staff's recommendations with the exception of, it's actually the second, number three on the list. It's actually the second number three on the list. The, the five-foot sidewalk that Richard mentioned on the south edge of our site leads to nowhere. I'm not sure, do you have the photos that Mark emailed over today, the site plan by chance? One more, maybe? That first one will be fine if you don't have that, just the site plan. So along the southern edge of the site, if you zoom in, you can kind of orient yourself with the sign. Entrance to the soccer, um, but there's a sidewalk proposed along that property line that, like Richard said, leads to nowhere. So we feel like, you know, constructing it is, is not remotely necessary or advantageous to the site. There's some funky grade changes, there's kind of a swell right there, um, that, that would render that fairly worthless. So our ask tonight is to remove that second number three from the conditions of approval. And then the other one falls under two B, there's some ambiguity in this one, in my opinion. You know, parking in all dry facilities should be located to the maximum extent possible, um, behind the buildings. And like Richard said, uh, you know, me, for example, me after tonight, I'm gonna head straight to a hotel, it's ten o'clock at night. You know, I'm gonna find that closest spot I can with my bag, walk in. And so it's just a comfort level to have as many of those parking stalls as, you know, accessible to that front door as we possibly can. So I'll, I'll leave the rest for questions, but the, but the ask is to remove the second number three. Um, and remove two B, which essentially, in my opinion, approves the site plan as you see it there in front of you.
So your ask is to remove s- second number three.
Yeah.
The five-foot sidewalk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the orientation of the building, or, excuse me, orientation?
Two B.
I'm sorry.
Two B, section, the majority of all service parking and all drive-offs should, should be located to the maximum extent possible is two B.
Okay, alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Questions for the applicant? Alright, seeing none, we will go to the audience, anybody in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand if you're online, come to the mic if you're in the chambers. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Resign, again, we have a preliminary plan and a preliminary plat for a hotel at the proposed site. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan, staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There were some notices of violation for the vacant property, which would be addressed from the development thereof. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including following the commercial design guidelines, the final development plan and final plat will have to come back in. The applicant is requesting the deviations from the commercial design guidelines, so to address the comments specifically. Two, A, B, and C are not met, so to request those deviations, all three should be kept in there and approved by the planning commission. And if you agree, again, we worked with the applicant on the best sighting as possible, they moved it a little bit, they added some sidewalks here and there. We thought that there could have been greater connectivity throughout the site, but again, I think it's your prerogative on whether they, they. Want the deviations or not, if you remove B, that means they'd have to come back and redesign it. To provide more circulation, so to keep B as a deviation allows them to move forward as currently designed, which is their request. The only change that they would then defer to you would be, we'll call it number five for now, I apologize for the reordering there. We, um, we didn't do the reordering, it should be number five or the second number three. It's the planning commission's prerogative on whether you want to eliminate number five, construct a five-foot sidewalk on the north side of Pinnacle Way to the east property line. As per the applicant's comments.
I, I want you to go back to two B, you're saying that by leaving it in there, it is what they want?
They are requesting deviations from the commercial design guidelines. We've seen deviations multiple times tonight and multiple meetings over the last couple of months. If they don't meet the requirement, which staff believes they do not, then they need the deviation. If you take out two B, that means you're not giving them deviation, they have to come back to the drawing board with us and redo their site plan. So if you like the design as is and agree that it should stay, give them the deviation, keep it as is.
Okay.
Misinterpretation on my part, we, we want the deviation.
You want all three of those deviations?
Yes. I want the building as shown as it on the plane.
Which requires those three deviations.
Okay, alright, well, that clears it up, I thought we were moving. Okay. At three is up to us, well.
Second number three and/or condition number five is, uh, again, I, we understand the point. It's a little different than. Typical sidewalks to nowhere that we go to, because we're connecting to an already developed parcel. So someone would have to convince the soccer's tournament to pick it up and connect it into their facility. Staff's thinking is, one, it's in the sidewalk and trails master plan. Two, it's in the commercial design guidelines. And three, that eventually, when the World Cup comes, we assume that this publicly accommodating facility. Which should probably have a dead connection, and this is one step to get it closer. But.
But it will go into a berm as it stands right now.
It would go into the, again, they don't have property on the south side of Pinnacle Way, so that's where they would build it. So again, if you disagree with staff's condition of approval, the planning commission has the ability to amend those.
Alright, thank you. Questions for staff? Hey, I'm seeing none, so I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
We're doing the plat first? Or the plan review?
Yes, plat first, please.
Plat first, okay. Uh, I move to approve plat two zero two four dash zero three three. I will go ahead and strike condition, the second number three or the five, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And then subject to staff stipulation, comments after that.
Alright, thank you, motion to approve plat twenty twenty-four dash zero three three made by Commissioner Ward. Subject to all staff stipulations, with the exception of striking.
The sidewalk.
Recommendation, the second number three or what is considered number five in the staff recommendations and conditions. Is that, is there a second, Commissioner Straws?
Yes.
Thank you, any discussion?
Point of clarification, that does include all three deviations?
Yes.
Alright, any question, I'm sorry, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Okay, I do have a question, because I'm trying to figure out how this numbering got like this. So the condition that we're striking is the construct a five-foot sidewalk?
That is correct.
Okay.
North side of Pinnacle, uh, way to the east property line, that one.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
Okay, we'll get that numbering all straightened out.
Thank you.
Okay, Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat thirty-three. With the conditions in the staff report, which includes approving all three deviations. In condition number two. And striking condition, construct a five-foot sidewalk on the north side of Pinnacle Way to the east property line. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, now let's entertain one for the plan review.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Move to approve plan review two zero two four dash zero three two, uh, with the three deviations in number two. And striking condition number five.
Alright, thank you, plan review application, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Plan review twenty twenty-four dash zero three two, striking the same condition that was made in the previous motion on the plat. Is there a second? Second goes to Commissioner Straws, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of PR twenty twenty-four dash zero three two. With the same conditions as the plat, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, the plan review application will go forward to the Unified Government on December fifth at seven PM.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the planning commission agenda.
Alright, thank you, thank you all for your participation and attention, and we will see you next month. And this, we're getting close to Janet's last meeting, so.
Next month is my last meeting.
Alright, well, there you have it.
Is there a replacement?
We, she can't be replaced. Is there someone going to assume the position?
Yes, there.
Yes, there, I believe there is going to be.
Better choice of words.
Alright.
Christmas tree lighting this Friday, FYI, if you all.
Where's it gonna be, I'm sorry?
Mayor's Christmas tree right out front.
Right, okay.
I don't know.
It, it's Memorial Hall, right? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhat out front, but yeah, Memorial Hall. Alright, thank you all, see you next month.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Janet.
You are welcome, thank you, sir.